Hello, I'd like to start the workshop off with a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Start off, we're gonna open a workshop.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can Sharon.
Thank you.
We'll open a workshop to continue discussions regarding proposed amendments to the zoning district use table to amend permitted uses for solar energy systems throughout the town of Hopkinton and to possibly change and/or amend the review and approval procedures for all solar energy systems within the town of Hopkinton as submitted by Peter Squares Esquire on behalf of his clients, Dr. Tom and Cynthia Skolko, including but not limited to discussion regarding potential impact with photo voltaic solar energy systems ordinance and the farm-based photovoltaic solar energy systems ordinance. For further details on the proposed amendment submitted by Attorney Squares, please visit the town's website.
You hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just disappointed of me, is our legal counsel present tonight?
He is.
Okay, thank you. Who's representing the town?
Who is?
Yes.
Stephen Seiple.
Thank you.
He's a partner.
Yeah, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to ascertain that somebody was here.
Yeah, 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 someone's here, yeah. Yeah, thanks for asking. Attorney Squares will be here at 7:30, so if we have any questions or anything, we're gonna have to wait till then. Jim Lanfear, hold on one second here. Jim Lanfear, if you're on here, can you please just raise your hand? I'm going to unmute you and just leave you unmuted. Alright Jim, Jim, can you hear me?
Good evening, Mr. President. This is Jim Lanfear, Town Planner.
Hey Jim.
Thank you.
And I, this is Scott, and thanks for spending some time with me Friday to chit-chat about what you've been up to as far as this project is for the town. Thank you Jim.
So, I kinda wanna address kinda how I wanna move forward tonight. Tonight, I would like this to be a discussion, a town council discussion on this proposed ordinance. I'd like to go through and really clean up this, what's before us right now, so we can move forward with the process. So, I would like to start at the beginning of it. If, Jim, if you have anything you wanna say, or if you wanna offer up any guidance at this time, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Yes. It's my understanding that the town has been presented an ordinance on behalf of the Skolkos by Attorney Squares that is advertised for a public hearing to be held on January the 19th. Now, we know at the public hearing, that proposed ordinance can be amended. What I see have, that has happened here, is that on the 14th of December, the 28th of December, and tonight, this is our third workshop, in which pretty much what we're doing is considering the proposed amendments, or tweaks if you will, that will occur in the context of the public hearing that's gonna begin on the 19th. So, with that in mind, I'd just like to mention that last Friday, I presented the town council with a proposed set of amendments to the ordinance that was given to the town, which was drafted by myself, the building and zoning official Anthony Santilli, and the deputy zoning official Sherri DeJardin. It appears to me that a lot of people have taken the time to look at it, and I'd like to commend Councilor Marvel for his initiative that he's taken to create a document that I just received somewhere around 4 o'clock this afternoon, and I've just scanned through it quickly. It really goes a long way towards facilitating this discussion, and I can see that it was based upon, after his read of what our town staff has presented. So, I believe it's, I believe it's a fitting place for us to start discussion without dwelling too much on what the staff presented. I can give you a brief overview, what the staff was trying to do, is that during the course of my involvement with the town on the solar issue, I don't see residential or farms being the source of the consternation from the public. I think, I think what the public is primarily concerned with is the unanticipated zone changes from residential to commercial in order to allow solar arrays. That is, I see it as what caused the furor in the town. So, having said that, what we proposed as a staff was to do residential and farms the same way we've been doing them in the past, and all other commercial systems, or systems that are principal, let's say, they would be reviewed as major land development projects by the planning board. And major land development projects give projects the highest degree of scrutiny that the planning board can give a project. We also proposed in our use table, in the ordinance, to keep it, keep it in commercial districts as currently exists, and I see that the proposed amendment by Councilman Marvel doesn't wanna do that, which is fine. So, I kinda like what Councilman Marvel has started, has put together here as a starting point, and I think we should, in an effort to facilitate this and get something ready to approve as soon as possible, I think we should start with his ordinance, go through it, and take it, take it one step at a time, so. That's my comment from now.
Councilman, Councilman Harris, I'm not prepared to discuss that, thank you. Was this sent by email, or was this done in hot copy, please?
Yes, I-
I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
I received the email in my office about 4 o'clock this afternoon, Jim Lanfear, Town Planner. I, again, and you know, Councilman Marvel apologized for the lateness of this, and you know, so close to the meeting, so I can understand why people probably aren't prepared to go through this, because they probably haven't received copies of it. But I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman, I believe you suggested that we use this as a starting point of discussion, so that's why I said what I said, but we can, I'm prepared to discuss anything that the council wants to discuss tonight.
Well, has Counselor Davis, did you get a copy of this, Counselor Davis?
Scott, nobody's received a copy of that, I don't think.
No, I did not.
Right, 'cause he sent it out late. Well, he, he just sent it out, obviously, you know, to Jim, I have a copy. Based on sending things out and printing them out, we, it's difficult, so I'm gonna suggest that we don't go through his proposal here.
Yes.
Well, right, I mean, understandable. So, what, what we do, we all have a copy of the, we, Jim, so we all have a copy of the original Skolko proposal. We have a copy of your proposal. We obviously all have our thoughts and inputs, so whatever is on Bob's, and you know, the adjustments that I made to mine, we could use the Skolko proposed amendment as a, as the base of it, and go through it that way, and discuss it, and come up with a consensus as we move forward on each topic. And if Council Marvel would like to interject, and you know, when it comes to that point in time, as we're going through the proposed ordinance, he can make his comments then. Does that sound fine?
Yeah, this is, this is Bob Marvel. Yeah, I totally agree. I, I did send that out, you know, very late, and I sent it out just to Jim and to you, Steve, so I fully expected we would probably just go through the original, the original ordinance proposal, and just, you know, keep in mind some of the, some of the changes and comments that we've been working on.
Now Jim, will you be taking notes as we go through? Bob has also offered up to take notes, too.
Sure, so I'm gonna, we're gonna follow the original ordinance as submitted and go line by line, correct?
Yes, and then, you know, we can all, we can all, you know, speak our piece, and see if we can come up with a consensus, see if there's something obviously we don't like about it, you know, I mean, find what we do agree upon, and then discuss, discuss what we don't agree upon.
That, that sounds fine to me.
No, I like that. So, do you, I will go through, and, I mean, should we, should I read out each, each section? Or, I mean, just kinda get to the section and ask if anybody has any feedback, or if they agree? Pull boats, I mean, some type of, some type of way to come to a consensus as far as an agreement?
Yeah, I would suggest, Jim Lanfear, Town Planner, I suggest that we take it line by line, that's the only way I know how to do something like that.
Alright, no, that's perfect. So, I will, I will read out, and I'm gonna start right on page 1. The original, we're gonna work off the original. I mean, you're, you're gonna have, I mean, Jim's was just like a proposal, you know what I mean, that's not, I mean, this is what-
I didn't have my original with me, but I will, I think, I think this one has the original. I think the draft is the original and the, their update.
Is that, is that from Jim? If it's from Jim, Scott, it has changes then that do not reflect the proposed amendment.
But it also has blue link and red, so I think it's got added and deleted.
If that is the copy you received from Jim, it is not the original, trust me. So, we're in the same boat we would be if we had Bob's, or, or anybody else, and Scott.
Steve, this is Bob Marvel. Does it make sense to share the copy online on your screen as well, or if you're able to do that?
I would have to, so, I'm using town's computer, so I don't have any files, obviously, on this computer, or access to email. That would be a question for Chris. I don't know. I mean, the amendment was on, online for people to download, we each all have a copy of it, I mean, it's, we've been going through this process for about four or five weeks now, so.
Steve?
Yes Sharon, go ahead.
I think you should go from the original, because I'm calling in and I wouldn't be able to see-
Sure, yes, that's fine, I have no problem doing that Sharon. So, I'm, I'm gonna start on here, Section 2, definition, okay? Accessory solar energy system. A solar energy system that is incidental and subordinate to the principal uses of the parcel and, I mean, or development. I'm gonna stop for one second. Jim, should, should I read the definitions, in your opinion, before I get to the use table? Is that, I mean, 'cause if we're gonna disagree, I mean, if we're gonna agree on these definitions, and then move on to the use table, I mean, I think that's gonna kind of, or will that dictate where we, or how we handle this use table?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jim Lanfear, Town Planner, I was, just before you started reading that definition, I was gonna interject and just offer, offer an idea for your, for your thought. Given, now, we have the ordinance as presented.
Yes.
And then, we also have our staff that took a look at this, and we, and based upon what we saw in the original ordinance, we pared it down and made amendments. Would it, would it, I guess, now that the council has had a chance hopefully to look at what staff has prepared, I wonder if the council could be prepared to weigh in and say how far off we are from what the council's thinking, how close, because we could cut down our discussion probably by a considerable amount if we look, if we liked what staff has produced. Now, if we think that's, now, as a starting point for discussion, 'cause at least everybody has, has that in their possession. Now, if we don't wanna, if we don't wanna go there, if we wanna start off with what was proposed, that's fine, too. And, so, you know, to answer your question, should we go to the use table first, if we go to the original ordinance, or read the definitions? They're both intertwined.
I have, I, Jim, I, I like that idea, I think that's a good idea. So, with that being said, though, I'm gonna offer, offer it up to you to go through. How's that sound? Because it's-
Well, I knew you were gonna go there, so, but I said it.
That sounds good.
Okay, let me-
What was yours?
I got a million papers in front of me here. Okay. The document that staff produced is 14, probably 14 pages long, and again, I have the advantage of seeing what Councilman Marvel produced, and quite frankly, I'm not averse to accepting some of it, so I have the advantage over a lot of people seeing what direction he wants to go in. But let's just go with what I gave the council for now. The first definition is accessory solar energy system. A solar energy system that is incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the parcel. I'm glad we're starting here, because there's one point that I want our solicitors to weigh in on, and I'd also like to hear from Attorney Squares when he comes on board, too. Staff talked about this at length, and the question is, can you have more than one principal use on a parcel? Attorney Squares seems to feel, based upon what he produced here, that you can, because he's got an S in plural. The way that the town, after talking to Sherri DeJardin, our deputy zoning officer, we've, we've never accepted that there's more than one principal use, that there is a principal use, and then anything else is accessory to the principal use. So, I'd like to get that established first, because what Councilman Marvel is, direction he's going in, he wants to make farm-based solar a separate use, which is, which is a principal use. And I'd like to know from our solicitors what they think. Can we, can we have more than one principal use on a parcel or not? Because the answer to that question is gonna shape what we, what we have here, both in the use table and in the definitions, so. So, I don't know if we're getting answers to that right now, but are we clear on the, on the issue here, is that what staff produced here is accessory uses, and then, actually, we put down a commercial solar energy system, and I have, I have to laugh, because I knew, I knew someone was gonna pick up on this and not take issue. I should've left it at principal solar energy system, as Councilman Marvel wants to go back to, and I see the reason for that, is that we, we don't wanna put these in commercial zones any longer, we wanna limit these things to industrial zones. That's what I see the council doing, so. So, we can, when we get to the staff proposal here, which we'll get to in a minute, I'll just correct that, and we can, we can correct the use table that I put together here, and take that right out of the commercial zone. So, so that's, I can, I can keep going with the, we can go right to the use table if you like, that might be a good place to start. That's, that's where the meat, all the meat is, right there.
It is, it's there.
Could I just chime in for a minute to just let Jim know that I, I understand your question, and I will look into it?
Okay, thank you.
I wanna make sure this is something that, I wanna check the town's ordinances and the state laws, and make sure that there's no issue or any difference between them, but I'll, I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay, Jim Lanfear, Town Planner, thank you. If I can just skip to page 3, and let's, I think, if one of the, if the only thing we can get accomplished tonight is to just solidify this proposed use table for the public hearing, that's great. I'd like to skip to page 3, the use table, proposed use 306. I'd like to strike out the word that I put in there, "commercial," we're gonna go to "principal." That seems to have some consensus on that one, and-
Where is, where is, where is your word, "commercial"?
Page 3, Sharon, of, page 3 of 14, where we have the use table, if you look at, at use code number 306. Again, this is, this is, this is not the original ordinance now, this is the staff-produced ordinance that you got Friday.
I got it, I know what you mean, you wanna change the "commercial" to what?
Principal. Principal solar energy system. And again, I have the advantage of seeing what Councilman Marvel wrote, and that seems to be what he, he wants to go in, and I'm not averse to that, that's, that's, that's fine, that's, that works. So, when you go across the column there, under "principal," 306, a principal system is not allowed in either of the residential zones, it's not allowed in the neighborhood business zone, and I'm gonna change the P in "commercial" to an N, 'cause that seems to be what the council wants. We'll leave, we'll leave the P in "manufacturing," 'cause that's where you want it, and then, as far as the aquifer zones go, a P there means that a, an aquifer protection permit is not required. If there was an A there, that would mean that you need an aquifer protection permit. So, I would say keep the, keep the P, and, P and the P in the primary and the secondary. Is there any, does anybody have any comments on that row there? Is anybody, is anybody object to that?
But Jim, you just said that the P under the manufacturing column means permitted?
Permitted by right. Now, your other option there, you could put an S for a special use permit, if you so chose.
Well, the difference is that P under manufacturing, you just said was permitted, but P under aquifer and overlay-
Yes, that means, that means you don't need, that, that means you do not need an aquifer protection permit.
So, one is you don't need it, and one is you do need it, that's what I don't get.
No, there should be a P in both of them, I would suggest, that's-
Yeah, but between those two and the manufacturing, would the Ps sound like they have different definitions?
No, an aquifer protection permit is something over and above a permitted use. So, you could have a permitted use, but in conjunction with that permitted use, you would need to go to the zoning board for an aquifer protection permit. You'll, if you go through our use table, you can see, you can see where that is.
Maybe you oughta maybe make, I don't know, maybe, maybe you need two Ps, means a protection permit, and the P in manufacturing just means permitted. I mean, I think you oughta make a difference.
Well, the question is, okay, the question is, we're gonna have a solar energy system, commercial, or principal, I should say, it's permitted by right in a manufacturing zone. Now, the next question that has to be asked is, do you want that application to have to go to the zoning board and get an aquifer protection permit? So, so if you, if you don't, if they don't need an aquifer protection permit from the zoning board, you'd have a P there. If, if you want them to go to the zoning board for an aquifer protection permit, and again, I think there should be some justification for it, I personally don't see the justification, but if you did want them to, that would be an A. And then if you, and then if it's not permitted, and you gotta be careful here, because the whole town is divided up into either primary zone or secondary zone. So, if you, if you put N in both of those columns, that means you couldn't do it, that would override the P that precedes it, that, that would mean you couldn't do it anywhere in town. So, you certainly don't want an N there. It's, it's a matter of either putting in a P or an A, and I would suggest that you put two Ps there.
Well, no, no, I just, I just wanted to know what the difference was, and-
See, some uses, some uses are allowed by right, with a P, but, but you, they're not required to go to the zoning board for an aquifer protection permit, because they're, they're kind of innocuous, there, there's no purpose to getting one. What they're doing has no adverse impact on the aquifer.
So, the aquifer and the overlay are allowed by right?
Uh, yes, and you could look at it that way, yes, right, you don't need a-
That's the same definition as the P in the manufacturing column.
That is correct, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yep. Okay, so, does anybody else have any questions?
Jim, Maggie Hogan has the handout, the planning board solicitor, I just wanna-
Okay.
Maggie, go ahead.
I'm here, I'm unmuted, what was the question?
Oh, no.
A question, Jim Lanfear, Town Planner, Maggie, the question that I asked a little while ago was, can you have more than one principal use on a parcel? The, the ordinance that was given to the town seems to suggest you can, because it says principal use or uses in parentheses. Now, the way we've done things in the past here, and I get it from talking to my zoning department, is that we've never recognized more than one principal use. That seems to be implicit in the definition of principal, that, you know, you have a primary use, and everything else is secondary to it, or, or accessory. So, I'd like to know how you feel about that.
Actually, I just sent you, Maggie Hogan, planning solicitor, Jim, I just sent you an email on that, and generally speaking, when it comes to zoning ordinances in towns, there is one principal use, and the other uses are accessory. However, unless you have a mixed-use component to the ordinance, so that you might zone an area mixed-use, where you could have, let's say, a commercial use and a residential use on it, that is typically however called out, you know, on the zoning maps, et cetera. I indicated to you in my email just now, I'm not entirely conversant on Hopkinton's zoning ordinance as of yet, so I concur with Attorney Seiple, that that's something that would need to be looked at, but I'm gonna guess that if there was a mixed-use area in town, you and Tony Santilli would know about it.
Jim Lanfear, Town Planner, I concur with that assessment, Maggie. Matter of fact, Sherri DeJardin, Deputy Zoning Official, said the same thing to me, is that if we had, if we had a mixed-use zone in town, then you could, you could have multiple principal uses within that mixed-use zone, but we, we do not have that, so. So, I concur with your advice.
Alrighty.
I'm sorry. Jim Seepoff here, can you answer, and I don't know how I missed it, but the aquifer primary, what is the definition of that, what is the-
That, we have an aquifer protection map.
Yep.
And a wellhead and aquifer protection map, which is a part of our zoning ordinance. And basically, the entire town is shaded either one color or another, and a good deal of it is primary. Now, the primary consists of areas that were basically mapped by DEM as aquifer recharge areas, they're very critical, it's a primary aquifer in town, so it's a very, very critical area, and then the bulk of the town, anything that's not primary is defined as secondary. And again, we have a map identifying, identifying that.
That's, that's good. So, in that aspect, I mean, if it's a critical area, and it's our primary aquifer, and shaded out, I'm gonna make a suggestion that that's, that's not an allowed use, and that it shouldn't be permitted. I'd like to hear what the rest of my council has to say in regards to that.
I agree, it shouldn't be allowed.
I mean, I think building a, a, a principal use, which, you know, is, I mean, obviously, it's a manufacturing use over a aquifer, a primary aquifer area, it would just would not be in the best interest.
This is Bob Marvel, I just have a couple of questions for Jim. The first one is, just in reading this chart, am I now reading these columns as aquifer overlay, and one is primary, and one is secondary?
No.
Yes, Jim Lanfear, Town Planner, yes, Counselor, that, that is correct, there, it is basically an entire overlay of the town, a portion of which is a primary overlay, and a portion is a secondary overlay, but it is an overlay district, yes.
Okay, alright, so maybe for clarity, what we can do is, on the column headings, we can just specifically say aquifer overlay primary and aquifer overlay secondary. So, my second question to you, Jim, is, do we have instances where there's manufacturing zones over an aquifer overlay primary?
I would venture to say yes. I, I would venture to say yes. Um, but I, I would, I would offer this. I, I don't know that you can really put a blanket, uh, statement in there saying that, um, if, if something is in the primary aquifer protection zone, it can't be done. I think you really have to look at the use specifically. Um, and I, and, and again, in the case of what we're dealing with now, uh, primary solar energy systems, I think you have to really study it and say, what, what impact does this have on the aquifer? Uh, you know, it's been my experience doing these projects with the planning board for several years now. I haven't seen any evidence presented by anybody that they are harmful to the aquifer. Uh, the panels seem to be contained, unless somebody can, you know, show me otherwise, but, um, but again, you can put whatever you want in that. If you wanna put an N such that you eliminate it from the primary, that's certainly your prerogative to do so, but, I don't know, the way, the way I think is that things should be justified, um, on, on legitimate grounds, but...
Um, so I, just to add that, I mean, so I, I, I would say my justification could go both ways, whereas, you know, your, your opinion is that, you know, that they're sealed and that it, it shouldn't be a problem, but, I mean, I, I just, I, it, it just seems like a, like a, like a chance, you know, the unknowing, and especially it's resulting, you know, effects on, on an aquifer, um, you know, especially with the pounding of pylons into the ground. I mean, that's, uh, you know, I mean, that's, could affect, you know, fracture, fracture, uh, ledge, and all kinds of other stuff, which could affect the way water flows, where it goes, and all that other stuff. So that, that, that would be my argument against. So if you were looking for an argument against it, and to be able to put an N there, that's how, that's how I would justify it.
Uh, Phil Hurst, you could also argue the other way, that, uh, people are property owners, and they have, uh, their property, and people who pay taxes on these properties, and, uh, you've got people who have multiple acres in, uh, an aquifer primary zone, and they're still paying taxes. I mean, they're restricting them, and, uh, if you have somebody that's looking for solar just to, uh, help with their property tax, most of the people, there are many people, when they look at solar, they're thinking about some benefit to property taxes, uh...
Scott, we're, we're, we are talking about potentially polluting aquifer. That's, that's what we're talking about. I mean, that's...
Yeah, but you just had to comment.
Okay, all right, I understand that, but, I mean, it's...
A little better qualified than I think any of us, I think any of us, uh, who said that, uh, he didn't know of a case where it was pollution, and I, I would ask the town planner, so I understand the fact correctly, that, uh, apparently, when this thing was proposed, that, uh, it came from somewhere, and it was probably something other municipalities already do. Is that correct, Mr. Lamphier?
I, well, what, what we're looking at right now, um, Scott, is a draft that was done by staff. And we just felt that, um, you know, we're looking at the ordinance we have right now, and it, the ordinance that's in place right now does not require, um, an aquifer protection permit. If you, if you look at number 486, which is what we're trying to strike out, uh, you have, um, you have a P in commercial, P in manufacturing, P in the primary, and a P in the secondary. So, if, if we're proposing changes to that, we can certainly do so, but, I mean, that, wha- what's there right now is consistent with what we've been doing, not that we have to keep doing it. But if you wanna put it, if, if you feel comfortable putting an N under primary, we can do that. I'd just like to keep in mind that what we're doing tonight is, we're, we're putting something together for the public hearing on this ordinance. So nothing, noth- nothing is carved in stone at this point. It's all gonna be, I'm sure that when this goes to public hearing, there's gonna be a lot of people wanting to comment on this, and, and you're gonna have opinions probably all over the spectrum. So, we, we, the work here tonight for us is to just put something on paper for discussion purposes at the hearing. So, with, with, what you do tonight with an N, whether you put a P, an N, who knows what's gonna happen to it?
Yeah, but usually, before you go to a public hearing, uh, certainly you can change anything, but you should have an idea of what, what other communities do for similar type of zones, so it's a basis of, uh, going to the public on things, and, uh, you can listen to testimony, but the staff, uh, we gotta assume is a little better, uh, in tune with things than five members of the town council. Not necessarily, but in most cases, uh, they would be, and, uh, the people also are very concerned about, uh, some tax benefits, so whether it's, uh, their business, or, uh, anything else that will address their property tax concerns.
Jim, I, um, I wanna thank you for mentioning that this is a working document that we are preparing to present to the public at a, at a public hearing. Um, I, I, I hope everybody in the audience realizes that. You know, at, at the end of the day, this is a, you know, a decision for the town council. We are working through this so we can gain a better idea of the direction that we want to go in. Uh, we have had two prior workshops, um, we, which I admittedly allowed plenty of people to talk and to go through, and anybody wanted to be heard. So, uh, this, this early on discussion is gonna be driven by the town council, and, and, and obviously Jim working us through this, um, proposal. And, uh, again, Jim, thanks for, uh, bringing that to, to the attention of, of, of everybody here. Thank you.
Yeah. Jim, Jim Lamphier, town planner, uh, well, thank you very much, uh, uh, Mr. President. Um, I'd just like to, let me just say this, is that, given the fact that the way we've been doing things with 486 has a P in the primary and the secondary, when staff sat, uh, sat down, the three of us sat down at the table, we kept it the way it is, because we didn't really see any justification for changing one of those Ps to an N. I mean, if, if we saw problems, if we encountered problems, we probably would've suggested, say, you know something, based upon, well, our experience, we, we think there should be an N there. But that's what, that's what staff has come up with, um, not saying it's right, wrong, uh, but we just didn't see any, any good reason to change it. So that's why we kept those Ps where they are, so, but entirely your call.
Councillor Davis, or, just hold one second. I'm gonna back up just a minute. Jim, did we, did we put an N on, on commercial, or do we just not, we have, we have not needed that decision?
Yes, we're, we're gonna eliminate that from commercial. Well, I'm, I'm changing that to an N.
Excellent, excellent. So if any, if any other councils wanna weigh in on this, uh, aquifer or overlay, primary and secondary, um, please do.
Yep, uh, Bob Marvel here. Um, I, I'm gonna suggest that as, as the third option for the primary aquifer is, I believe, an A, which, which requires a little bit more scrutiny. Uh, doesn't necessarily allow it by right, or doesn't, doesn't prevent it, but it just provides a little bit of scrutiny, um, as a starting point, so that we can get through this, this point and, and move on.
Thank you, Bob. I, I like that idea. I mean, it's just, right, I mean, I think if there's a, a place to be scrutinized, it, it, it definitely has, uh, it should be done with our resources in our town. I mean, our, our drinking water and our, I mean, that's, you know, without that, we're, we're nothing. You know what I mean? We, I mean, it's, it's so important that we can't just, 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 just leave it up to development, and, and just kinda see where it goes from that. So I, I think that's a great observation.
Jim Lamphier, town planner, change, uh, change made. P goes to an A.
Thank you, Jim. Sharon, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I agree with the A.
Okay, Jim Lamphier, town planner, again, if you wanna skip to the next row, if we finish that row. Um, 307, accessory solar energy system. So that, uh, when, when we sat down to look at this, we figured that an accessory system would be residential, an accessory system would be, um, a small one on a farm, because that would be an accessory use to the principal use, which is that of a farm. So that's what, that's what we were thinking. Um, and so, again, we have Ps right across the board. So, I'll open that up for comment.
Now, the other justification on this Skolko, um, uh, district use regulation, was there, there was a special use, right? Which would, would, would add a, a whole nother layer to, to some things, right, Jim?
Yes, uh, Jim Lamphier, town planner, um, yes, the, the way, the way I read the proposed ordinance is that virtually every single solar installation, whether it be a residential, you know, home, or, or what, what have you, has to go to the zoning board for a special use permit, and I just thought that was way over the top. I, I, I can just imagine the council is getting flooded with phone calls as to why you're making me, Joe homeowner, go out and spend the money that's required to go to the zoning board and the advertising and everything, so that I could take advantage of a national grid program and put a couple of panels on my roof. Uh, I, 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 I don't see that working in practice. I think it's gonna cause a lot more problems than it's worth. Um, and then also, I, I, again, I, I just put farms in the same category, is that I, I don't see, I don't see one acre, um, you know, small, 250 kilowatt, uh, solar, uh, arrays on a farm as causing a big problem in the town. I haven't seen that from, from farms. So, that, that's why I would suggest to make it an accessory, but it doesn't seem the way, based upon what I saw this afternoon, it doesn't seem, um, what councillor Marvel wants to do, so, I'll, I'll back off of that for the time being.
Well, I, I think that, uh, it's important, Councillor Hurst, that we take a stand for homeowners, uh. There's, you know, very few, uh, large landowners. Most people live in a house, and, uh, they probably have a mortgage, and worry about all the other expenses, and they probably have a, in many cases, a few kids they have to, uh, to take care of, uh, and, uh, uh, I think we should think, uh, whether or not you're gonna make somebody go to the zoning board to do something like that, uh, that they might get some benefit from having solar panels on their house, or, or, or at least on one side of the house. I guess, uh, I don't think we got anything, did, uh, from the fight upon it yet. I haven't heard as far as, uh, asking for their input, but, uh, I think we try to make it a little easier for the homeowner. I think they got enough challenges as it is.
Bob Marvel here. Can I comment also?
Go ahead, Bob.
So, um, my, my thoughts on this is, um, I agree with, uh, with Scott, and I agree with Jim, that accessory solar is something that we can allow in all zones, uh, provided that we are, uh, very precise on our definition of accessory solar versus, uh, principal solar energy systems. I think, um, if we can define accessory solar so that it's clear that it's, you know, the, the residential rooftop or very, very small systems, um, then I think it would be, uh, would be fine to allow it by right in, uh, in all zones. Um, as, as for the, you know, one acre ground-mounted solar systems, um, that, you know, could be defined separately for, for farms, I thought, in, in a version that I have, that, that Jim has, uh, has some of that in it. And, uh, we can, you know, kinda go through that at a, at a later point.
Hey, guys, Councillor Gary here. Uh, Councillor Marvel, I, I kinda concur with you on some of the things. I don't think the town council should be in, in the, you know, the business of telling homeowners what they can have, what they can't have when it comes to this stuff. I kind of, uh, I kind of follow Jim Lamphier's thoughts on this, and I think we should go with Jim's thoughts on it.
Yeah, I'm on board. I'm on board, for sure.
I'm on board.
Okay, uh, Jim Lamphier, town planner, if I can move along to the next, uh, row down. Uh, we have, uh, use code number 308, contaminated site solar energy system. And staff suggested that we have a special use permit in RFR 80, R1, and neighborhood business. Um, we looked at that from this perspective, is that there may be some contaminated sites that are on residential property. So I guess the question is, to be answered, is, does the council want to address them, or does the council wanna just say no? Um, nothing is allowed on those sites?
I say no on that, uh, Councillor Moffett. I, I, I say no, um, no, definitely no, uh, solar on, uh, on a contaminated site in a residential neighborhood.
Hey, Jim, it's Councillor Gary here. I know, uh, in the, in the contaminated side of the house, what is the DEM or N state regulate on this? I mean, I know, uh, we do have a site here in Hopkinton. Do they have to come out once a year? What is the cost base on that? What is the town's responsibility on it? Or does it go to the, sort of, landowner? Could you give us a little, could you lose a little on that?
Jim Lamphier, town planner, well, um, first of all, a contaminated site has to be known.
Okay.
Has to be made known to the DEM. Uh, there, there could be an awful lot of stuff out in the world that just nobody knows about. So I, I guess it's gonna take, it would take somebody to bring it to somebody's attention, number one. Uh, get it on DEM's radar screen. And then, once it gets on their radar screen, um, it's, it, it's questionable as to how diligently they want to monitor something like that, or pursue some sort of action. Quite, quite often, in practice, DEM is a little bit, let's say, laid back, um, on certain things. I, I'm sure that, that if they were more inclined, or let's say, had the time, uh, to be, uh, more, more vigilant, I'm sure that they could, there'd be no end to them putting the heavy hand down all across the state of Rhode Island. Uh, it's a huge problem. So I think, I think basically, they just, um, uh, they, they just take care of the most egregious cases, uh, that are there first. I mean, things that are actually causing pollution to wells and, and, and things of that nature. Um, it's, it's probably not as well policed as what you might think it is. I know they're looking at our town, our, our town, uh, landfill sites. They're on, they're very, looking at them very closely, as they should, and they're working with us to get a solar, uh, array on top of them, and get them closed out properly. So I know that, I know the DEM is watching us, the town, uh, as far as any other, uh, uh, you know, contaminated sites that may exist out there in the world somewhere, um, I, I don't know. I'll just, I'll leave that one alone for now.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Uh, Councillor Moffett here. I, I, I am actually gonna propose ends all the way across contaminated source site.
Propose what?
Ends all the way across.
Thank you. Can I say something? This is Sharon Davis.
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Sharon.
I would agree with the ends, except that Subtown Road, which was, which is going to be the town solar project, is a contaminated site. Is that, isn't that right, Jim?
Uh, Jim Lamphier, town planner, yes, uh, Sharon, that is correct.
So if we say no, then technically, we're saying no to ourselves. And I just, I don't know, can we just have an exception for, for town-owned landfills? I don't know if, uh, from a, from a, uh, uh, one of our solicitors, if, if we can do that. But it, but I don't wanna go to any other, I don't want it allowed on any other contaminated sites. Um, I just think you're open up, uh, opening up a can of worms, and I don't necessarily wanna say yes on that. But I, I agree that the town project on, uh, Subtown, um, you know, we should do everything we can to, to go forward on that. So, it will require us having an exception.
I would, uh...
I don't wanna revisit Old, Old Depot Road. I don't wanna revisit anything else that somebody... somebody might know about, that's a old landfill that all of a sudden, they'll just say, oh, well, we're under-contaminated, so we can just do it. I don't want to do that.
Well, first of all, I would respectfully disagree with you. The, I could be swayed, but I respectfully disagree for this reason. There's a lot of stuff in town. I grew up in Hopkinton, I think, along, and some places are obvious to some people that could be contaminated, others are not known, have been contaminated. And I think with a special use permit, you give the town government the possibility, not that they have to grant a special use permit. Special use permit is not a given. I recently took a lot of flak for my support of the rezone of Kamali Granite. That was a former junkyard and also a quarry, how contaminated it is. But a government entity can make a decision based on the facts, and also get some input from DEM, or some other source, what you can do with that property. Because I think you've got to remember that you're taxing people, property taxes on property. So, the bigger question is, what can you, what can you do with this property, whether it's solar or anything else, that can be put there because you're still charging these people property taxes for the land? Unless you want to go the route that you're just not going to charge them property taxes for the land that they own. So, I think you've got to look at that. The bottom line is, on Depot Road, that solar project was turned down by a council that I wasn't a member of. But the big question is, what will ever, what will ever be done with that property? What will, then we also have the element of consistency. We're going to have one standard all the time for the town of Hopkins, and what we can do is the town government, and then another standard what other property owners in town have. So, I think we really need to reflect on that. So, I would say, unless somebody sways me to a contrary opinion, that some of these should have special use permits. That will give the zoning board of review the option, if they think it's in the best interest of the town, to grant them, and give them the flexibility, just to say no on a piece of property that whoever owns that is paying property taxes on, and they could probably get some use out of it. So, I think we really shouldn't be putting ends there. That's my perspective. Thank you.
Scott, where specifically, can you be more specific, and just, I mean, are we talking, or do you, do you want to put solar and contaminated areas in, on a one acre lot? Or?
You know, probably not.
Right, so I just, just talk to a specific, be a little more specific.
I just think that, my issue is to give the zoning board of review, which is one that has to always grant special use permits, the ability to make that judgment. Normally, in one acre lots, of course not. What I think, RFR 80 should definitely have the end.
Neighborhood business?
Let me reject a little bit here. I think, I think what Scott, Sharon, I think what Scott is trying to say is, is if we go ahead and just, we say yes to Subtown Road, then everybody else in town who has a contaminated site, we say no, or give them a difference of what we do, that would come up to question. I think that's what Scott's trying to say.
So, if we move on to manufacturing on contaminated sites to a special use permit, that's obviously going to give it an extra layer of scrutiny.
Right.
Right? So, I mean, and A, it's going to be allowed by right in the manufacturing area to start with, right? So, I mean, if we tag it with a special use, you know, letter, then I think we could probably work with that. I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, but you understand what we're trying to say?
I understand completely what you're saying.
I'm good with it. Excellent.
Thank you Sharon.
Okay. Frankly, I don't know why we, can I make a statement? I really, if we have, if people own contaminated property, they should fix it because they contaminated it, if they own it. And they should have fixed it by now, is the way I feel.
Bottom line is, that when people buy property, or they're thinking about developing property, they might find things. People own things, they don't know 100% of the history of the property, even if they own it for 20 or 30 years. And special use permit is what it is. It's granted by the zoning board of review, and they don't have to grant it, but they ask the question. You've got to entrust a zoning board of review to whether or not they're going to grow, grow, excuse me, grant a special use permit. I think that...
But right now.
Contaminated is.
Under our current, under our current PSES, if that's a contaminated property in RFR 80 or RES 1, it's not allowed, and they have to come to the town for a zone change, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, depends upon how much bureaucracy you want to put people through, especially.
Well, that's the way it is right now, correct?
Bottom line is, it depends upon how contaminated a site is. I mean, it could be a former landfill. There could have been an old garage that has gasoline, or something of that nature, or something.
I mainly hung up on the RFR 80 and the RES 1.
Are we talking contaminated Sharon? I just want to be on the same page.
Yes, I'm still uncontaminated. I'm still uncontaminated. I'm with you Steve. I think it should be not allowed, but I don't know how to fix the fact that Subtown Road is an RFR 80.
So, we would have to, and forgive me if I'm wrong, but couldn't we rezone Subtown Road, the property?
Yes.
The, right. So, if we end for everything except manufacturing, and put special use in there, it adds an extra layer of scrutiny on it. It's going to get looked at in the manufacturing zone. Principal solar, as we had it written now, is allowed in a manufacturing zone. So, if we add the S to it, special permit, that gives us extra scrutiny, again, I mean, it's going to be looked at, and if it's not feasible, then it's just not.
Not warranted. I mean, the bottom line is, and also, I have an interesting, how is contaminated actually defined? You know, did you have a gasoline spill? Or, I mean, it depends upon what the contamination is. There's different types of contamination, so you really can't be general about that. Usually, you have a contaminated site, if it meets the muster of the DEM, or some environmental agency, and remediation can take place, then usually that's satisfied, is how it's usually taken care of.
So, Mr. President. Well, did, just, I mean, this is just maybe, it's not a pocket. I mean, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk about any solar.
No, you shouldn't, because we're talking about general stuff right here.
Right, but you've gotten specific on certain things, as far as, but I'm going to, we're kind of getting away from it here. Do any other councils have any comments or concerns on a contaminated site, how they would like to see the use table addressed, for contaminated site solar energy system?
Yeah, Bob Marvel here, just wanted to comment. I agree that the contaminated site tables should be ends across the board, except for manufacturing. And the reason it's an S, in case anybody's wondering why it's not just a P, the reasoning, as the way I understand it, is the nature of the contamination at the site may make it either feasible or not feasible for a solar, solar array. So, that's where the extra review and scrutiny needs to take place. My concerns about adding it either by right or under special use on any of the other zones is, if it's, if it's not a contaminated site, if it's just a regular site, then we wouldn't allow it unless it was manufacturing. So, if we allow it either by right or by special permit in any other zones, other than manufacturing, just because it's contaminated, we potentially open the door to, you know, here's an easy way to, to, you know, raise some money on my site, because I can call it contaminated, and kind of get away with it that way. And I think that we just, we kind of end up shooting ourselves in the foot by allowing it, preventing it one way, but then allowing it another way. That's my thought.
Exactly, that's what I was trying to get to. I concur with you there, Council Marvel.
I agree too.
So Jim, put an S on manufacturing, and an N all the way across on contaminated site solar energy system, please.
Yes, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, so noted, Mr. President. In terms of the primary and the secondary, would, would it make sense to put an A in both of those, since they're going to the zoning board for a special use permit anyway?
I would think so, yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, two As, okay. All the changes are made.
Now Jim, just, I mean, you know, forgive me for my ignorance here. You know, you talked about this use table. I mean, that's really, I mean, that's very important, because that's going to dictate how we move forward through the rest of the document, right?
Yes, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, absolutely. That is, that is the first place that we always start, when we're talking with somebody, is go to that district use table, because that, that tells you exactly what you can and cannot do. So, it's probably appropriate not to go back to the definitions. And as, as Councilor Marvel pointed out, it all depends how you define accessory, which he has done in his, in his iteration, which I saw this afternoon. So, we can go back to the definitions if you like, or anything else?
Definition?
I mean, I think we pretty much nailed that one down.
All right, so we'll just go over the definitions real quick then. Does that sound good, Sharon?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, if you want to, if you want to continue with the definitions, I just read the accessory solar energy system. Very simple definition, what we proposed. I know the iteration I saw this afternoon has a little bit more, a little bit more fine point on it. So, I'm not sure exactly at what point we want to roll that out. We can probably do that at the public hearing. But, right now, basically, a solar energy system that is incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the parcel. Pretty simple. Next one is contaminated site solar energy system. And here is where we define it at the local level, irrespective of how it might be defined at the state level or federal level. But, we define it as a principal solar energy system located on a contaminated site, pending remediation, or a remediated and restricted contaminated site. A contaminated site solar energy system shall be reviewed as a major land development project, if it would occupy 40,000 square feet of area, inclusive of interro and panel collector spacing. A contaminated site solar energy system shall be reviewed under the Development Plan Review Ordinance, if it would occupy less than 40,000 square feet of area, inclusive of interro and panel collector spacing.
I would, Jim, with that being said, I'm going to propose that regardless of the size of it, a contaminated site energy system should fall under major land development, if that is possible. If that's, I mean, if that makes sense.
Yes, I, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, I would concur with that. I believe anything that's not accessory should be reviewed as a major land development project.
Okay. So, we'll make that change to that. So, it would, a contaminated site solar energy shall be reviewed under the, as a major land development, right? And then we strike out, we're going to be striking out less than 40,000 feet, the last.
Yes.
Yep. So, we should probably end it right after, as a major land development project, right?
Correct. Period, yep. And then strike out the rest.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, the next definition, if I can move forward after that, is a contaminated site pending remediation. That's defined as a property that has been identified and confirmed by RITM as being contaminated through issuance of a letter of responsibility, but which has not yet been remediated to the satisfaction of RITM.
Now, I have a question on that. So, a contaminated site pending remediation. So, once it's remediated, would that potentially fall under the, if it was in a manufacturing zone, under the principal energy system? Because if it's been remediated, it's not contaminated anymore, right? Is that?
No, if it's been remediated, it's still, the underlying contamination is still there.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Any objections to that definition?
No.
Okay, next definition is ground-mounted solar energy system. It's a solar energy system that is structurally appended to the ground, and is not supported to a structure or building.
Andy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Jim, what page do we go to, on the, on your?
Page one.
We're back at page one.
Jim, Bob Marvel here. I think it might, and maybe, maybe technically, it's better this way, but it sounds like it would, it would read better if it says, solar energy system that is structurally appended to the ground, and is not attached to a structure or building.
Yes.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So, you're taking, changing supported to attached?
Yeah.
That word?
Yes.
Yep, change noted. I think it's better.
Any objection?
Nope.
Excellent, next.
Next was a strike through of our existing ordinance, where we strike photovoltaic solar energy system in its entirety. Does anybody have any objections to striking that?
No objection.
No.
Okay. Moving on to page two, we're going to change that to principal, take out the word commercial, and make it principal solar energy system. And that is defined as a solar energy system that produces more than 100% of the energy that is necessary to support the other uses occupying the parcel. And again, we'll have to revisit that and see if that's plural or singular. These are system whose main purpose is to generate energy for sale back into the energy grid system, rather than being consumed on the site.
Jim, yeah, Jim, Bob Marvel here. That first part of that definition, that first sentence, I wasn't really clear on its meaning. Where it's producing more than 100% of the energy back to the grid. I think principal, well, it produces all of it, so a full 100% back to the grid. So, I was. I'm sorry.
So, should we strike more than, and leave it as a solar energy system that produces 100% of the energy?
No.
I would, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, I'll make a suggestion here, a quick fix. Why don't we say a solar energy system, and then we'll strike out, beginning with that, strike out the rest of all of that, and we'll... that, strike out the rest of all of that, and we'll skip down to the second sentence, and we will say a solar energy system whose main purpose is to generate energy for sale back into the energy grid system.
I like that. Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay, I agree. I agree.
Okay. Next definition, remediated and restricted contamination site. A property, number one, that has been identified and confirmed by RITM as having contained a hazardous material contamination. Number two, on which remediation activities were conducted to the satisfaction of RITM as documented within a letter of compliance or an interim letter of compliance. And three, for which RITM has required the use of the property to be restricted through an environmental land use restriction.
Any objection?
No.
No.
Okay. Next definition, we have roof mounted solar energy system. A solar energy system that is structurally appended to the roof of a building or structure. Again, I saw what, uh, Councilor Marvel wrote today, and I kind of like his, uh, amendment to that one, if he wants to bring that up. We, I think he said building mounted.
Yes, in some of the, this is Bob Marvel, some of the, the cursory research I did, there was some mention of, uh, solar systems mounted to walls instead of roofs. Uh, don't know if that's something that we would be okay with. At any rate, uh, I, I suggested changing roof mounted solar energy system to building mounted solar energy system.
I, I prefer roof, Bob. I just, just, just for the fact that it kind of nails it down. You know what I mean? And if we wanted to, you know, I mean, obviously this is a document that, you know what, next year there could be another, and I mean, anybody and anybody obviously can put out an amendment. So I, I personally, and my opinion is that we, uh, roof, roof mounted, I think that just kind of...
And that's fine with me.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that too. It should be roof mounted.
Roof, yeah.
Okay, leave it as is. Next definition is a, uh, a, um, a stricter of our current definition of solar access. Does anybody have any objections to striking that from our current ordinance?
No.
Okay. If none, we'll move on to solar canopy. An elevated structure that hosts overhead solar panel installation to provide shade above a parking lot.
I would like to strike solar, solar canopy, period. I don't want solar canopy.
I mean, the only, the Council here, the only place that we even see would be the parking lot, but I don't think the state is willing to invest money in something like that. I'd, uh, I'd like to see it structured.
I agree. I would, I would, I, I would not oppose that, Council Marvel.
Okay, Jim Lamphier, consensus seems to be to strike it, so I'm taking it out.
There's not a lot of, I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, statewide, I, I'm sure there's plenty of opportunity for that, you know what I mean, in other places. Um, at this current juncture, I, I mean, I would think a canopy parking area in Hopkinton would kind of take, you know what I mean?
Oh, I, I agree, I agree with that.
Alright, cool. So I don't need to sell myself on that anymore, so.
You do see them, you do see them in New York, in the city.
Yes, I agree. Excellent, thank you, Jim.
Okay. Um, Jim Lamphier Town Planner, continuing along, we have a definition of a solar energy system, and this is in there basically to describe what, you know, applying to both accessory and principal. Solar energy system is, uh, the equipment and requisite hardware that provide and are used for collecting, transferring, converting, storing, or using incident solar energy for water heating, space heating, cooling, generating electricity, and offloading set electricity to the grid, or other applications that would otherwise require the use of a conventional source of energy, such as petroleum products, natural gas, manufactured gas, or electricity produced for a non-renewable resource. This shall include photovoltaic arrays and installations that utilize ground mounted systems. A solar energy system, when the principal use of a parcel, shall be deemed to be a manufacturing use.
Um, I just would like to make, I, I have a couple notes here on this, uh, where it says at the very first words, the equipment and requisite hardware. Should we insert and structures that provide? I mean, hardware is hardware, I mean, it's kind of what you use to, you know what I mean, to kind of, uh, go fix something to things? You know, you would, you would use hardware to fix something to a structure, is what I'm saying.
Sure. Wouldn't hurt.
I agree with that, yeah. Because the word hardware just, just kind of leaves it just open ended.
Right. So it would be hardware and structures that provide.
So noted.
And then one other, uh, one other thing here, um, it's the second line up right in the middle where it says electricity produced, it should be, I think, from a non-renewable resource. Not for a non-renewable resource.
Yep. So noted.
And then the last sentence.
I missed that.
Uh, Sharon, so it's, um, it's a second sentence up from the bottom where it says, or electricity produced, it says for a non-renewable resource, it should be from a non-renewable resource.
From, okay.
And then the last sentence, it says a solar, this, this is how I, you know, I think it should go, it says a solar energy system, comma, when the principal use of a parcel, comma, shall be deemed to be a manufacturing use, just to break that sentence up for just a little better understanding of it.
So noted.
Uh, Bob Marvel here, just a comment on that last line. Uh, does, does that last line become redundant because we've specified it that way in the, um, land use table?
It, it certainly is, but, but it, but doesn't hurt, but for emphasis.
Okay.
You could strike it, you could strike it and, and, uh, and have no effect.
I'll, I'll go along with what the other councilor's desires are on that.
Keep it.
I'm fine with keeping it.
We're on the...
It's the last sentence. It, it's the last sentence in solar energy system. Um, it's, it's, um, Bob, Bob brought it up and said that it could probably be struck because it would be redundant. It would just kind of stay something that is in our use table, so it's, or, or we could just leave it in there.
What's everybody's consensus?
Um, Sharon, I said yes, Bob is fine either way.
If everybody's in, I concur with everybody's.
We'll leave it in there, Jim.
Okay.
Just for emphasis.
Okay, great. Um, next definition, a solar energy system operator. The agent or entity that conducts the daily operation and maintenance of the solar energy system under contractual agreement with the solar energy system owner.
I'd say keep it.
Any objection? No?
What's the definition of a solar energy system owner? Is that the land owner or is that the, that the installation guy?
That's the next definition, and basically that is the owner of the equipment and appurtenances comprising the solar energy system.
Okay. Then it's fine.
But now that said entity, if I can continue that definition, uh, could also be the operator. You could have an owner-operator. But the, but the operator could be different than the owner, so.
Okay.
That concludes...
That doesn't mean, uh, then you still could be a land owner and not be either one of those, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Jim, uh, just a, just a question, Bob Marvel. Um, is it appropriate here, under the definition of solar energy system owner, to put some, some statement of accountability for, um, you know, uh, safe, secure, uh, operation, maintenance of the solar system? I don't have the direct wording, uh, in my head.
You could. I, I think that's addressed later in the, in the body of the ordinance, but, um, and it might be, um, it might be a little more, more appropriate there than within a definition, but I'm not saying you couldn't put it there.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
I would say, let's, let's look at the rest of the ordinance and then we can always revisit it if we, if...
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, that concludes page two. Uh, on to page three, which we pretty much dove into pretty good here and concluded. The only thing we didn't talk about is the footnote, um, pertaining to a special use permit. And it says, um, a special use permit granted for a, uh, I, I want to strike out major or minor there, uh, and just put solar energy system. A special use permit granted for a solar energy system, um, may not be granted in conjunction with a dimensional variance. So that, that, that's pretty much a blanket statement that covers everything. And again, I'll even strike out land development project or accessory solar energy system.
Right, that's better, yep.
Makes it simple.
Yep.
Does anybody, uh, have any comment on that? No? Okay. That concludes the first three pages. Now we're getting into the, uh, the details. And, you know, at, at this point, at this point, I'm not sure exactly how to proceed. We can certainly go through it page by page. Um, there's quite a number of them to go through. I don't know what we're going to get through tonight. Um, but I, I do like the document that was produced by Councilor Marvel that I saw this afternoon, and, you know, might, it, too bad it wasn't given to us a little bit earlier because it might be more appropriate to take that as our starting point to go through the rest of this rather than, uh, because he, he basically had comments on a lot of the material that's here, and they were good comments. And so, um, I'll, I'll leave it up to the council as to what you want to do. I can, I can continue if you like.
I would, this is my suggestion. I, if, if we work off of your document, Jim, and Bob, Bob has no problem, um, adding to that what, what his thoughts were on that. I, I think that may satisfy some of it. I mean, because at, at the end of the day, he's just going to offer up his opinion. I mean, this is his opinion. He's going to offer it up anyway after we read the definition. Do you feel comfortable with that, Bob?
Yes, absolutely.
So I mean, this, at the end of the day, it could be just Bob's notes, you know what I mean? He's thinking off the top of his head, this is what he would have brought to the table anyway, you know, especially. So it, it shouldn't be a big deal. And, and again, I'm sure Bob will happily email anybody who...
Yeah, Bob, hey, Council Marvel, Council Gary, I already know the answer to this question, but I'm pretty sure you're going to go ahead and send this to the rest of us.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't completely ripped up and torn up. It's not, I mean, I looked at it quickly. It's not like it's, you know what I mean? It's, it's, it's not much different than what we're looking at. And if Bob has a suggestion on something, or, you know, again, I, I would hope that we've all done our homework and we were all going to go line by line and know what we wanted to say in this situation. So I, I feel confident that Bob will speak up and explain his, um, his thought on each section.
Okay, that's, that's, yeah, that, that's fine with me. Um, I, and I think that's a, a good thought on your part because certain, Bob, Bob certainly has the opportunity to, uh, interject everything that was in his, in his, uh, document this afternoon. Uh, there, there were others also that, uh, had comments in that document too, which might not be, uh, readily inserted here, but at least Bob can get his in there. So I think, I'm fine. I'll, I'll go as long as, I'll read as much of this as you want to hear me read. I'm fine.
And I'll just say, Jim, Mrs. Bob, uh, I, I have notes on some of the other, uh, comments in, in, uh, additions, um, like, you know, comments from, from Mr. D'Orio and so forth. So I can interject some of those as well.
Okay, great. Okay, well, I'm on page four of the document that the staff produced, and it's section five point three, and it pertains to solar energy systems in general. And five point three point one, purpose and applicability. A, the purpose of this section is to regulate the installation of solar energy systems by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of such systems. These standards are intended to ensure that solar energy systems are compatible with the surrounding area, provide for public safety, and minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources. The provisions of this section shall apply as specified herein to construction, operation, and/or repair of a solar energy system installation in the town.
Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, I just want to add an S to installation, installations.
In the final, in the last line there, so?
Yes, plural.
Yes.
We're going to have...
So noted. Okay, I'll check that off as good.
Bob, is that good?
It, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Capital B, accessory solar energy systems for which a building permit application has been submitted prior to the enactment of this section shall not be subject to the requirements found herein.
Any objection? Hearing none? Sounds good.
Okay. Five point three point two, permitted uses and review process. Going to take out that word commercial. We're going to replace it with principal. Principal solar energy systems. Capital A. Principal solar energy systems shall be permitted as set forth in the table of permitted uses in section five of this ordinance, subject to the restrictions set forth in this section. Everybody all set with that?
Sounds good.
Okay. Capital B, a principal solar energy system proposed for farms as allowed under the Town of Hopkinton Farm Viability Act shall be reviewed under the development plan review ordinance. Any thoughts here?
My, my thought is, is, um, my thought is, is, what's that, Sharon? Do you want to go ahead?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. No, my thought is, I mean, obviously all principal, I mean, and, and this could be for further discussion too later on, um, because I know the, and I'll say now that obviously the Farm Viability Act is, is, you know, important to, to a lot of people. Um, and I, from the on-site, I mean, from the onset, excuse me, would think that that aspect of this ordinance needs to be discussed and further. Um, I think there's a, there's a lot of, uh, people that have a lot of things to say in regards to that. And, um, it's kind of where I'm at with it. So, but anyway, so to back up, as far as all the other principal solar energy system in that, in our use table are considered major land development. So, I mean, I would think we should probably stay consistent with that, if that's where we're going with it. Does that make sense?
Certainly could do that, if, if that's your choice. It was, again, it was my, it was our, uh, uh, understanding that we, you know, we're trying to, we, we're trying to keep farms viable. So I, I think the underlying thought here with the whole Farm Viability Act, to be honest with you, if you read it from top to bottom, everything it includes, we're, we're attempting to cut the farmers an awful lot of slack and give them a lot of options to do things which will generate income that'll keep a farm as a farm. So I guess, I guess if the question is, um, you know, to what extent do you want to encumber them?
So I'll ask this question. What's, I mean, development plan review versus major land development? I mean, how much more scrutiny and, and stuff are we talking? I mean, if, if it's, if it's going to be a principal solar energy system, I mean, I... if it's, if it's going to be a principal solar energy system, I mean, I, I mean, we are helping the, the farmers out potentially by allowing this. So, I mean, to be allowed to have some sort of review, I think is, is a pretty fair shake.
You, you could do that. Uh, uh, review as a major land development project, uh, does not need to be that much more difficult than development plan review. Development plan review can, starts off with a pre-application meeting with the board, where the board takes a look at the project, and if they deem it to be so insignificant or, or of so little impact, they don't even need to see it for a second meeting. So, so that's, that's, that's a little bit of an ease there. If, if they want to bring it back for continued develop, develop plan review, they could do so. With a major land development project, you're going to start off with a mandatory pre-application meeting. And then there's two other stages after that. There's a master plan and a preliminary plan. The board could combine those two stages into one stage with, so there'd be one public hearing. Uh, so it's, it's, it's a little bit more involved, but I, I don't know, it's.
So I'll just say this again, Jim. I, a, a, and I told you earlier today in the email that, you know, I, you know, this ordinance, I really hate to get caught up on the true intent, and the true intent is def, I mean, in, in my opinion, is, is to not hurt farmers and to help farmers. And my original thought, even from the outset, just because of, I mean, there's a lot of little dynamics, you know, and, um, I, I thought that the Farm Viability Ordinance, part of this ordinance should be completely separate and have a completely different discussion with, with, with our relevant parties, to have a better negotiation or a, a better understanding of the whole situation. So leave it as it is temporarily. That's my, my opinion, how it, how it reads. So again, um, I mean, for the time being, I, I just. Do you kind of get where I'm going with it?
I, I do, Jim Lafferty, Town Planner. I, I do concur with your reasoning. I, I agree with it. Um, it's always something that can be revisited, um, tempor, you know, you could leave it the way it is for the time being.
I mean, I, I just want to give it its true due diligence. I mean, I want to just kind of make sure we're, you know, we're working out for everybody, you know? I mean, not that everybody's, I mean, it's obviously the farm viability is going to affect farmers more than their neighbor or however. But I just think, you know, the community we live in, that it's a little bit bigger of a discussion than, you know, I mean, because like you said earlier, you know, the big uproar was the big solar. So why are we going to drag this through that? You know, I, I, I would like to approach the farm viability as a just, we need to figure something out. We need to come to a happy medium. It can't just be black and white. There you go. You know, you're a lot of these things. I mean, we just, we need to figure it out, but everybody needs to get.
I, I would agree with that, wholeheartedly, yep.
Jim, Bob Marvel, I got a, just a, a quick question on this. Is, uh, development plan review, is that something that has, um, uh, like a, is there a public forum as part of that, or is that just an internal board review?
There is no public hearing associated with it. The first meeting is a pre-application meeting, and that does require a mailed notice to people within 200 feet of the perimeter of the parcel. So a butters would be notified of the, uh, project, um, not, but not an official public hearing where you have to advertise it in the newspaper and you have to send out certified, you know, letters and things of that nature. Um, it's, it's, it basically, development plan review, the difference between, a lot of people don't understand this, the development plan review is something that our zoning ordinance can contain. And basically, it's intended to be there for the smaller projects, the projects that, uh, have, have very little impact on a community, projects that require a building permit, projects that are for commercial entities. Let's say a, a commercial entity wants to put a addition on their building, or let's say they want to do, uh, new windows or some sort of a, you know, garage door. Though, all those things require building permits. So the question is, if you didn't have development plan review ordinance, would you want to put those people through a major land development project with the planning board? And I think, I think that's the reason why we have that, so that people don't have to go through that, that type of, uh, you know, process. Um, and again, I, I brought, I mentioned this at the first workshop, but, uh, the Land Development and Subdivision Review Enabling Act, okay, specifies, uh, differentiates minor land development projects from major land development projects. And the way this original ordinance was presented, it said that, um, it, it said that, uh, anything less than 40,000 square feet could be done as a minor land development project. When you look at the state definition of what a minor is, it clearly says right in the definition, all non-residential projects are major projects. So I, 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 I found a fatal flaw, I thought, in that original proposal. That's why I went with everything being a major land development project, uh, for commercial systems. So that's, that's a quick, you know, ex- explanation of the difference between development plan review and the land development review process with the board. So.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon?
Okay, I think there's a little, um, inconsistency. Uh, I thought that based on the table, that a farm was an, it was, a farm solar was an accessory use, not a, um, principal use.
Yes.
So I'm not sure that, that this B section, uh, regarding the Hopkinton Farm Viability Act should be necessarily here. It might need to be under accessory 5.333. Um, to be consistent with the, with the table.
That's a good catch, Sharon. I, Jim Lafferty, Town Planner, I think that's a very good catch.
Yep. But I also agree with Steve that I think the, the viability act, the farmer viability act needs to be separate. For the moment, I think it needs to be separate, but we can keep going.
So, this is Bob Marvel. Maybe at this point, we should, I, I can interject an idea that I had, um, Jim, if, if you don't mind. Um, the idea of, so if we go back to the zoning table for a second, we have, we have three zonings districts for solar. We have accessory, we have principal, and we have contaminated site solar energy systems. And we have, you know, allowed, uh, or specified where they're allowed and so forth. Do we want to consider maybe adding a fourth district that is specific to farm sites? And then in the definition, we define it as a, you know, a farm as defined as the farm vi, as defined in the Farm Viability Act. Um, and then, you know, we can specify, um, you know, whatever we want to do in these zones, if we want to do, you know, permitted, or we want to do by, you know, special permit or something like that. And I think that might, you know, help us clarify some of the, the details down below.
Yes, Bob, Jim, Jim Lafferty, Town Planner, uh, yes, I noticed that in your, in your draft today. Uh, I think that goes back to the central question that I asked earlier is that can you have more than one principal use on a, on a parcel or not? And so when I, when I saw what you, um, wanted to insert into that use table, that's what I was thinking. I said, oh, it looks like we have another principal use being inserted into the table. So I guess, I guess my question is, can we have that? I was thinking that all farms were accessory to the, to the farm. But if we're going to have a farm as a principal use and a solar as a principal use, that kind of suggests that we, that we need to allow two principal uses on a, on a parcel. So I think I'll leave that to our solicitors to figure out.
Uh, Council Gary, you have a question?
Yeah, I kind of, I think we all have very, very, really good ideas on this. I kind of concur with, uh, President Moffett. I think the Farm Viability Act, you should take this off and do it separately from this plan it says it is.
And then at that time, I, we can, we can bring up, you know, the, the farm sites. I mean, and just, I mean, that's, it'd be all encompassing in the conversation.
Because you're, because we'll basically look at this thing, to use President Moffett's, Moffett's words, is the big uproar is the big solar. Not farms, you know, out of all the farms, but there's 1,852 acres of just farmland in Hopkinton. That doesn't include forestry. Forestry is another 4,300. Out of that 1,852 acres of farm, there's nine acres of solar.
Um, and I, so to add to that, I have a question, Jim. Maybe you can answer this. Um, how does the, how would the, I mean, I, we have the Farm Viability Ordinance. Where does the, um, the forestry part come into this? Does, does forestry, I mean, that's, I mean, because, I mean, farmers are farmers and help out farmers and stuff. But, I mean, if you have forest land, I mean, what's up with that as far as, you know, being able to be in the forest program and then trying to use the farm viability?
Well, let me, uh, Jim Lafferty, Town Planner, let me suggest this as a way to get through this. How about if we take capital B that we're just reading right now, and how about if we just strike that from where it is? Let's go and take a look at the Farm Viability Ordinance separately and deal, and because it's my understanding that specific ordinances overrule the general anyway. So any kind of an ordinance that specifically pertains to farms, you can probably do what you want within that ordinance irrespective of what this ordinance might turn out to be, because it's more specific and more pointed to farms.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not advocating for, for solar in the, in the forestry program, just to make that.
Well, right, but, but where I'm going with this is, when we look at the Farm Viability Ordinance, we can adjust the definition, and I'm just.
Oh, I got you.
I'm just, I'm just getting, I'm getting to the ordinance right now where I want to read the, the, the reason why we started including forestry is how the ordinance is written currently. And it talks about silver culture. And that's forestry. And so, you know, we, we looked at this really, really close, the zoning department and my department. We wanted, we knew there were going to be questions about, about forestry, and we wanted to make sure that any application, you know, met the requirements. And we didn't feel as though we had the justification to exclude a, a, a particular application that was given to us because of the way the ordinance is currently written, the farm viability is written. And I'm trying to, trying to thumb through it here quickly to get to this. Yeah, here it is right here. It's right in front of me. Uh, we got to it because a farm product is defined as all agricultural, horticultural, silver cultural, and firewood, vegetable, fruit, or other products. Okay? So i- it also says at the bottom here, it says, this definition does not include finished forest products such as lumber or building materials. So, um, while, while somebody can't operate a, a mill to produce lumber from raw, raw logs, okay, the logs themselves that may be cut down, they come under the, a heading of silver culture and, uh, forest, forestry. So it, I would say, I would say, I, I know that, I know, uh, that people have pointed to the farm ordinance not being consistent with state laws and whatnot. This will be our opportunity to adjust our local ordinance any way we see fit. So.
Thank you, Jim.
I concur with, this is Bob Marvel. I concur with Jim. I think we should end with that way.
Yeah, Council Gary, I concur. Thank you, Jim.
So for the time being, we're striking B here, Jim?
Yes. And we'll move on and we'll, uh, re-letter the next one, uh, capital C now becomes B. And we got, "Review of a Principal Solar Energy System Not Being Proposed for Farms As Allowed Under the Town of Hopkinton Farm Viability Act Shall Be Reviewed as a Major Land Development Project Pursuant to the Town of Hopkinton Land Development and Subdivision Regulations As Amended. If a project is to require six or more months of construction as noted by the developer or extrapolated by the town based on other projects, the applicant shall provide formal written notice by mail to all the butters and residents within 500 feet. That provides the location and description of the project along with an estimated construction duration. When a principal solar energy system requires further relief from the zoning board or town council, requests for such relief shall follow the precedence of approval procedure set forth in Rhode Island State Law 45-23-61 of the Rhode Island General Laws, with the applicant first obtaining an advisory recommendation from the planning board, as well as conditional planning board approval for the first approval stage for the proposed project, which may be simultaneous, then obtaining further relief from the zoning board or council."
I disagree with that. This is Counselor Davis. I, this is a question for both the town solicitor and the planning solicitor, whether our current PSES, um, number, uh, A13 takes precedence over the state regulation 452361. If you, if you look at, at our current, um, ordinance, PSES ordinance, oh, let me skip to the page.
Uh, this is Maggie Hogan, the planning solicitor. As a general rule, local ordinances and regulations do not trump state statutes.
Well, that's the way we've been operating.
I agree with this, Counselor Moffett. I, I agree with, uh, with B here. Um, and I also agree with, uh, Counsel Hogan on this.
Steve, do you have any? I would add to the discussion. Is it 452361 is written with shall language? You shall go to the planning board, then you shall go to zoning or the council, then you shall, there's, it's not a choice. It's a state statute passed by the General Assembly that says the order that these things happen in. I don't think it's really an issue for, that's up for debate.
Solicitor Hogan here. I agree. And, um, the whole premise of the Development Review Act, as well as the Zoning Enabling Act back in the early 1990s, was to make, uh, procedure standardized throughout the state. And if you look at the purposes of both of those acts, um, that's what they state, is to make a uniform procedure throughout the state. Under no set of circumstances can, can a local municipality not follow state law.
Are there any other objections?
So wait, wait, wait. I'd like to know. So basically, the way we've been doing it, we haven't been operating that way. Um, so if, in our PSES ordinance, we just say that we want to get a, I want to be very clear, so there's no more questioning of this. Um, we say, we, under PSES, we say, we're asking for an advisory opinion from the planning board. Now you're telling me that the state statute says that, um, if the planning board does not recommend, okay, let's put, this is the question. If the planning board does not recommend, uh, a, a project, and does not give conditional approval for the first approval stage, then, then the, so that's, they're just saying no, that's not a recommend, it's not a recommendation, it's a definite no, okay? Then the, the developer can still ask for further relief by going to the council. So in the, and they get to come to the council anyway, and the council can make the final decision. Is that the way I should interpret this?
No.
No. If, if the, if the planning board denies the master plan application, then that is the end of it, except for the appeals, uh, that are available to the developer.
All right. So they would come to the town council as an appeal?
No.
The appeal would go from the planning board to the zoning board. The appeal would go from the planning board to the zoning board, and then it could be taken from the zoning board to the Superior Court.
Well, then why is that word council in there?
That, the, if the master plan is conditionally granted, then the next step would be to go to either zoning or the council, depending on, uh, the circumstances and the type of relief needed.
That's correct.
If the master plan application is denied, uh, then, then, then that's it, then it's time for the developer to appeal that decision.
Counselor Davis, this is Attorney Hogan again. I would direct, um, your attention, and I can read it for you, but I can direct your attention to General Law forty-five twenty-three sixty-one, uh, C. And it talks about, this is the precedence of approvals between the planning board and other local permitting authorities. City or town council, uh, where an applicant requires both planning board approval and council approval for a zoning ordinance or zoning map change, that a applicant shall first obtain an advisory recommendation on the zoning change from the planning board as well as conditional planning board approval for the first approval stage for the proposed project, which may be simultaneous, then obtain a conditional zoning change from the council, and then return to the planning board for subsequent required approvals. That's the state statute.
Okay, but if the planning board doesn't advise it, it gives a negative advisory on that, when, when, when we're requiring a, a potential zone change as well as, uh, uh, ordinance. So if, if the planning board says no.
Mm-hmm. It's no.
Well, this isn't just advisory, this is, the planning board can vote yes or no on the master plan application. And that, and that aspect of it isn't advisory.
Okay, and then what happens? Then that, the developer can go where?
The developer can appeal the planning board's decision to the zoning board, which would sit as a board of appeal. And if they're still not satisfied, they can take an appeal from the zoning board to the Superior Court.
Okay, so, uh, okay, so, but I'm reading the words here, uh, in this ordinance, and, and it, it, the last, um, the last part of, um, C that's now going to be B, it says, then obtaining further relief from the zoning board or council. So it's never coming to the council, is what you're telling me?
No, it would come to the council if the zoning, if the planning board conditionally approves the, the application at the first application stage.
For the zone change, then it would go to the council for the zone change, only if the planning board approved it, correct?
Developer would come to the planning board with an application that included the fact that they needed a zone change to get the project done. And if, and the planning board could conditionally approve that at the first stage of review, then it would go to the council to consider the zone change that they need. The planning board would also send along a recommendation as to whether they are in favor of that zone change.
And that zone change is a, it's, it is deemed to be a conditional zone change, which means when it goes back to planning, if for whatever reason it doesn't get through, uh, the next stage, then the, the zoning has not, in my opinion, um, been solidified. Because it's a conditional zoning change, so it says right in the state statute. Okay. My recommendation is that, uh, what you would do is just pluck the language from this statute and insert it into your local ordinance without changing its words. That way, there's no confusion.
I, I agree with that.
I agree with it too, but it sort of says the council has been operating a little bit differently.
Well, I, I'm not.
We're gonna, we're gonna follow the law here with this council.
Yep.
And we're gonna move forward with that, and, and I, uh, definitely concur that we should add the, you know, the definition or, or the statute in there, uh, based upon, uh, Attorney Syphal and Attorney Hogan's, uh, recommendation.
Will do. Jim Lafferty.
Check.
So, Jim, at our next, you know, when we have the actual hearing, I guess you'll, we'll have the, the full wording for that section.
Yes, um, if I can just think ahead a little bit here, I'm just, I, I don't know how far we're going to get through this ordinance tonight, and I know the public hearing is going to come first on the nineteenth, um, but ju, I'll just throw this out for an idea. The town council could always open this public hearing and continue it.
Oh, yeah.
To a date certain, so I will, um, if you want it, if the town council wanted to have another workshop and finish going through this ordinance, because I don't think we're going to get through it all, but, uh, I, I, I think we could probably get through this entirety here with one more workshop, uh, and then, and then, you know, go back to the public hearing when it's continued. I mean, that's, but, but I, I'll tell you what, I can have this, uh, ordinance amended to the extent that we get through it, and I'll, I'll have to turn it around real quick and we'll have it, I'll have it before the week is out to the council, this week's packet. But, but the whole thing won't be done because we won't get through it, but.
Attorney Hogan, my recommendation, uh, assisting Jim in, in his procedure here is that you, you as the town council could include for your meeting next week in your agenda notice, uh, the public hearing that is currently scheduled, as well as a workshop, so that if the, you decide you're going to continue the public hearing to a date certain in the future, you can go ahead and utilize the evening for continuation of this workshop.
Okay, I agree.
That's providing that the, uh, council agenda is not filled up with too much other material, but.
Correct, is that a regular council meeting?
It is.
Whoa, okay, well, there you go, there's your call.
Is Lisa there?
Yeah, this is Lisa.
Are you, are there in, any other things, uh, scheduled for the nineteenth?
There is your annual renewal of commercial haulers licenses, but they're more a procedural matter. The, uh, individuals do not have to be present for that matter, so that should not take you very much time. Um, I just started reviewing the agenda, I think there's a lot of, uh, resignations from different, uh, entities in town, from the Committee on Aging, from the, uh, I can't recall the other one, and there's some reappointments, but at this point, there's not an overly huge agenda.
Okay. Okay. I, I, I like Attorney Hogan's suggestion.
Uh, Counsel Mopkin, I, I, I do as well, um, I'm sure, you know, what Lisa just described here, um, that's already potentially scheduled for the nineteenth is something that we may be able to, uh, to take care of quickly, maybe as a council. Maybe the council can show up at six-thirty, half hour early and get that started.
No, it has to be, doesn't it have to be to the public? It has to be in front of the public, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, I mean, I'm, yeah, no, I mean, I'm talking to public media, I'm just saying, starting, having a town council, regular town council meeting start at six-thirty, have our meeting first, and then schedule a workshop following.
Okay.
Well, if it's, this is Lisa, could it be listed on the agenda as potential workshop as well?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that makes more sense.
Yes, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with Lisa's suggestion on this, I mean, she's been doing this for a long time, so, um, I'm sure she can work some magic.
Yeah, but, but Lisa, don't, because it hasn't it been advertised that we are going to have the hearing, we would still have to open the hearing to, uh, and then continue it or whatever, whatever, procedurally.
Yes, I'm, yes, this is Lisa, and I'm sure that, um, the proper language we'll have to be, we'll have to come up with for that. But yes, the matter has been advertised for hearing already.
Okay. So we have to open the hearing and then make the motion to continue it, and then we can go into the workshop, is that correct?
I would believe that you would want to have Attorney Scores to, um, be amenable to that as well.
Right.
And he has indicated in the past that he's willing to work with the council on this, so I would anticipate that that would be something he would be willing to work with you on.
Okay.
Excellent.
Jim, uh, Jim, this is Bob Marvel, um, before we move off of this item, uh, I just want to ask, a- at the very beginning of it, uh, where it says, uh, review of a principal solar energy system not being proposed for farms as allowed under the Town of Hopkinton Farm Viability Act, do we, because we're kind of carving out the Farm Viability Act, uh, process as a separate process, do we, do we want to leave that in there, or do we want to just move, uh, remove that, that piece of it?
Jim Lafferty, Town Planner, let's strike it, uh, strike everything beginning with the word not, and right through Farm Viability Act. We'll pick it up again at shall, shall be reviewed as a major.
Would you repeat that, Jim, this is Lisa, that would be the new item B.
Yes.
It'll be, say, review of a principal solar energy systems, and then, strike.
Strike everything out from there until we hit shall be reviewed as a major land development project.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so I'm, Jim Lafferty, Town Planner, I will insert that language from state law, and I'll try and rework that paragraph, and I'll get it, get it to you as soon as possible. Um, if you want to move to page five.
Yeah.
Top of page five. Capital D becomes capital C. Changes to approved systems. All proposed changes to an approved principal solar energy system shall follow the process outlined in the Hopkinton Land Development and Subdivision Regulations for major land development projects.
Jim, do you want to strike the word commercial and principal?
Yes.
I'm good with it.
Any comments on that particular item?
That's fine.
No? Okay. Capital E now becomes capital D. Solar energy systems and any associated equipment shall not be allowed on land held under conservation easement or land for which the development rights have been sold, transferred, or otherwise removed from the parcel, unless the conditions of the easement deed or other applicable legal document specifically allows the installation of a solar energy system, or shall receive approval for the disturbance or use of such lands by the holders of the easement or restriction. Everyone fine with that?
Attorney Hogan here. Um, I, I would just note that for, um, certain, uh, development rights, uh, that have been funded, require, I believe, and I'll give you the statute, I'll go look it up, but requires, uh, permission of the Attorney General's office to remove any of those lands from a conservation status. And, uh, I hadn't seen this earlier, so I'll have to look up that statute for you, um, but just make a little note about that.
Yep, so noted. Okay. Five point three point three, accessory solar energy systems and solar canopies. Um, before we go any further, we want to strike out solar canopies?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, under that, we have capital A. Accessory solar energy systems, including solar canopies, I guess we want to strike that, shall be permitted as set forth in the table of permitted uses in section five of this ordinance. All set with that, with the strike through?
Uh, solar canopies has to be struck in that, right, including solar canopies?
Correct. So noted. Capital B, accessory solar energy systems shall not be constructed, installed, or modified as provided in this section before a building permit is obtained. Okay, all fine with that? Capital C, roof-mounted solar energy systems shall be subject to the following requirements. A, it shall not exceed the height requirements prescribed by the zoning district in which they are located. B, on flat roofs, accessory solar energy systems shall be installed in accord with state building and fire codes. C, roof-mounted systems need to be sited so as to provide all proper clearances from other building roof penetrations, including but not limited to plumbing stacks, elevator shafts, and chimneys, and shall conform to the state building and fire codes. Everyone fine with all that?
I'm good with that. Jim, just a question, this is Bob Marvel, just a question, I know that in your version or your iteration of this, uh, you actually removed several of the items that were in the, uh, proposal by Attorney Scores.
Correct, yep.
Can you just kind of do a, you know, five thousand foot view of why you removed them? Because they're, you know, whatever, however reasoning?
Uh, yeah, well, it, it was done in conjunction with the conversation with the building and zoning department, and, uh, let's see if I can thumb through quickly and get to what was included in the original. Yeah, we left, we left three in, there was quite a few that we, that we scratched out. You've got to keep in mind that we had, started off with a nineteen-page document that was proposed, and we got it down to fourteen pages. So, um, while we didn't want to gut the, um, the intent of this, because I was, I'm fully aware of the conversation that's been had now over the, the weeks of this, uh, we, we didn't want to do anything that was, um, you know, totally unnecessary. So we, we, we tried to simplify it, pare it down, so we did, we did eliminate, uh, you know, considerable amount. That's the problem about going through with the staff-prepared document, is that it doesn't show what we, what we, uh, striked out of the original. Um, so, it's, it's tough when you've got multiple documents floating around, and you're going back and forth from this one to that one, but, um.
Yeah, no, this is Bob Marvel, I, I, I appreciate that, I, I know that a lot of the items that were on the original, uh, proposal were very specific about, you know, panels can't be higher than the roof peak, and, uh, you know, the, the, the panels and equipment has to be, you know, match the color of the roof. Uh, some of these, actually, a lot of these items are in the existing ordinance, I think, and maybe were just carried over, um, from the existing ordinance. But, uh, but yeah, I, I anticipate that we're going to get questions, uh, from, from the public, so.
Yeah, uh, if, I'll give you the five thousand version as I'm, as I'm having time here to go through this. Basically, we, we retained three of those, um, uh, of those items. Uh, going through it with the building official as we did, all of, a lot of this stuff, uh, is. with the building official as we did, all of, a lot of this stuff, uh, is, uh, within the building code. So when you, so basically when you have C there and says, everything shall conform to the state building and fire codes, that encompasses a lot of what's there and spelled out separately. As far as the painting to match the roof color, uh, that's, that's a tough one because sometimes when you, when you buy these systems and then you apply paint over it, you, you know, void the warranty that's on these things. And, um, I, I, I really don't know that there's, there's a need to paint these solar arrays on roofs to match the color of a roof, to be honest with you. I, I personally, I don't find, I think black goes with everything and, and some of these systems look, look very attractive even though they don't match exactly the color of the roof. Um, even a house for that matter, a lot of times the shutters are a different color than the body of the, the house. So I, I, I just don't know the wisdom of requiring something like that. I think you're inviting more problems than, than it's worth.
Hey, Jim, it's Counsel Gary. Go ahead, Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I was just going to comment again. I'm, I'm looking at the existing solar ordinance that we have in place now and, and under, uh, section B, item two, it, it basically is word for word that the equipment frames, et cetera, have to be painted the color of the roof. So that was really just a carryover, I think, from the existing ordinance.
Well, that could be.
If it doesn't make sense, let's take it out.
Sharon, hold on.
Okay.
Counsel Gary here. Yeah, I mean, think about this. Let me, realistically, if, if, if you're, if the roof is say, it's a beautiful tin, tin green, okay, then the, the solar panels come in, they're legitimately, they're on aluminum. The homeowner would have to paint that. It just, it, the whole thing used to just come out. No color matching.
I mean, and, and anybody in this town can paint their house any color they want to, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah. I mean, so we could get ready up, set and painted, you know, uh, I mean, that's just my opinion, neon green or fluorescent pink. So I think that whole thing used to come out.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to, uh, this is Bob Marvel again. I, I didn't want to kind of obsess over that one item. Um, but I, I just kind of wanted to, maybe, uh, in anticipation of some questions we get, I just wanted to veri- verify and validate that a lot of these other items were taken out because they are part of the state building codes and this is kind of redundant having them in there. So I, I, Jim, I appreciate you, you pointing that out.
Can I, this is Sharon. Can I make one comment at least?
Go ahead, Sharon, please.
Okay. Under, under either the new one, which is under G, page eight of nineteen, or our old ordinance, it was under section B. We had, uh, number seven says, on flat roof, accessory solar energy system shall be set back from the edge and or behind architectural features to be minimally visible. And I think the minimally visible part is, might need to be in there. I think that, I don't know. Unless you guys think that roof mounted solar can't ever be minimally visible. You know?
Well, I mean, with, with, with the stuff they put down, I mean, take a look if, you know, if you take a look, if you go up to, say, going up route three to exit one, the storage building off the left hand side, you would never know that has solar panels unless you really, really looked at it because they kind of, they kind of blend in with the roof. They're not sitting up on a frame. They're not hanging off the building. I mean, it's, whoever did that pretty much knew what they were doing. You can't even tell. But I understand what you're saying about minimal visual.
On flat, it says on flat roof. It specifically said on, for a flat roof, it needs to be minimally visible. I don't know.
I don't think we have a lot of flat roofs in Hopkinton, do we?
Nope. But that, it was in the ordinance. It's in the PSES. So I think maybe we should just, um, kind of look.
I, I'm personally fine with, I mean, it was in the original. It's proposed now. Um, I'm kind of with Sharon on this. Um, you know, I mean, it does, it does, I mean, there's going to be more flat roofs probably built sometime in the factoring or what, I mean, what, I mean. I mean, I, I think that's fine. I wasn't going to kind of go off topic, but I was kind of shocked that they put an automatic door in for a liquor store in Hopkinton, you know? But anyway.
All right.
I'm good. Um, I, I think it's fine to keep it on there.
So would, just for clarification, do you want to add that in there, the minimally visible?
Yeah.
Yes.
You want to put that back in or?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I will amend little B to, to go back to what it was. Okay.
Jim, uh, it's Bob Marvel. I'm going to suggest also because the, the item that you had originally for B, where it says, uh, it, it says, uh, flat roofs, accessory solar energy system shall be installed in accordance with state building and fire codes. Maybe leave that there as B. Take out the on flat roofs and then add as a new item, the, the specific verbiage about flat roofs.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you? To basically make it a general statement that all of the solar energy systems are installed in accordance with state building and fire codes?
Okay. Yep. And then, uh, let's, let's make a new D. We'll drop down, put a D down there and we'll put in the minimally visible, uh, language. Fair enough.
Okay.
Mr. President, I, I just wanted to, uh, let the council know that I, I was, uh, I received an email that, um, Attorney Andy Tights is on here now. Uh, he's replaced Peter Squares. So if you have any questions, uh, you can address them to Attorney Tights.
Thank you. Okay. If we could move along to section five point three point four. Application requirements for review of solar energy systems by the planning board. Capital A. When reviewed by the planning board of an accessory or principal solar energy system is required, all applications shall include, in addition to the requirements set forth within the applicable review process, the following. Number one, a project narrative which shall contain a summary of the proposed facility, a description of the facility's context in relation to neighboring land uses and environmental features, and detail regarding the proposed operational characteristics of the solar energy system, including key features concerning the means and methods planned to minimize or avoid off premises impacts to adjoining land uses.
So, uh, Jim, this is Bob Marvel. Um, one of the, um, comments, uh, were actually emails, and you've seen this, that I received from, um, one of the residents added, uh, actually Elaine Calderon asked to add the following words after the word uses. Um, and to the geological, comma, hydrological, comma, ecological, comma, cultural and scenic values of the Wood Pocatop watershed.
That's, that's a fine addition. There's no problem with that.
I'll just mention, uh, thank you. I'll just add, mention too that Elaine had other, uh, specific wording, uh, changes and additions, mostly additions. So I'll just mention them as we go through them.
Yes, I did. I did notice them today when I read that. Yes. Okay, capital.
Number one?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, now just to number A, just real quick, um, of number eight, letter A. Um, it says, when reviewed by the, uh, second sentence, it says, should it be all applications shall at first stage indeed? Or does that not make sense? Do we need to put in at, at first stage or is it, uh, explicit somewhere else?
Uh, first stage? All applications shall include at the first stage?
Or shall at the first stage?
Sure. That, that, you could put that in there. Yep, that works. Yep. So noted. That'll be in. Okay, uh, on, now on page six. Capital B. Applications for review of a principal solar energy system shall also contain, number one, a landscape plan prepared by landscape architect licensed in the state of Rhode Island, which meets the requirements of the town's land development and subdivision regulations in this section and depicts the locations and types of both existing and proposed vegetation. Is that fine?
Yes, I would just add an A before landscape. Uh, a landscape plan prepared by a landscape architect. That's all.
Correct. Very good. Number two, identification as to whether any prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance exists on site as determined by the United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Service within the most recent Rhode Island soil survey.
Sounds good. No objection?
No objection here.
Okay. Number three, identification of any Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management natural heritage areas that may exist on site.
Any objection? No objection.
No, no objection. Uh, at this point, Jim, this is Bob Marvel. I'll add another item. This, this would become item four as requested by Elaine Calderon. Uh, so it'd be item four, identification of any designated wild and scenic river or tributary within a quarter mile of any point on the perimeter of the site.
Okay. That will be number four. Because I, I have that language from this afternoon, so I can just cut and taste it, Bob, from what you gave me.
Perfect.
That'll be done. Okay. Number, number four now becomes number five. A soil erosion runoff and sediment control plan that meets the requirements of the town's soil erosion runoff and sediment control ordinance and identifies the extent of proposed limits of clearing and or disturbance, including the areas cleared and or disturbed during construction. Fine? Okay. Number five is now number six. A lighting plan for the premises.
Uh, Counsel Gary, I, I don't think I remember seeing any lighting plants because they're not all, all the, the solar is not lit up.
Uh, very good. Good observation. I haven't seen any myself, to be honest with you.
I, I, maybe I'm wrong, Jim. Maybe there's a, like a red light or something or at the gate or something like that.
I mean, I would think if an emergency.
I think there's a red light or something.
I mean, but I, I would, um, it's just a thought, you know?
Well, I mean, think about it. I mean, yeah, I agree. But think about it. Ronnie and, Ronnie and the boys, they're not going to, they're just going to keep changing it through. But I know what you're saying. But there was something about, I'm not sure how it was written in the original, the original sort of thing, but there was something about that there'll be no, no lights on, no lights, no lights lighting up the solar as per se. I remember this from many, many of the solar meetings.
Yeah. Of, of all the projects we've done, I can't think of any, uh, lighting of any significance. Certainly nothing that would require a lighting plan. The only lights on there might be some monitoring lights on the inverters or the, uh, uh, you know, transformers or something like that. But they'd, they'd virtually be invisible to anybody unless you walked up to the equipment.
So this is Bob Marvel. In, in reading the, uh, existing, uh, ordinance as it states right now under section C, PSES design guidelines, um, there's a item three called lighting and signage. And, uh, item A is states, lighting of the PSES shall be limited to that required for safety, operational and maintenance purposes.
Yeah, hence, hence, that's what I mean by you'll see some that have like a double led red light. You'll know, of course, the, the signage has to be on the gate. I remember that throughout all the, the meetings, you know, in case of emergency call, Counsel Hurst or President Moffett. But there's, I think, behind it on maybe inverters like Jim is saying, you'll see power. I do remember seeing a red light on something.
Right. I mean, we don't want to light up like a Christmas tree.
Right.
Right.
I mean, if we don't have specifics as far as a lighting plan goes, we can't really enforce it, you know? I mean, we would be kind of arbitrarily picking ideas out of our head to, to apply to that.
It's under, under the, the current one, our current one, it's under, um, A, general requirements, number four about exterior lighting. Page three. It would be on, on the, our, our regular, uh...
On the current ordinance?
Uh, yeah, our current ordinance is on page three, number three, under A, general requirement. I mean, I'm sorry, number four. It's number four under A, general. It says, but exterior lighting within the facility shall comply with all Hopkinton lighting ordinances and be the minimal necessary. All fixtures shall be full cut off fixtures approved by the International Dark Sky Association.
Do we want to use that, um, use that verbiage? This is Bob Marvel.
I say we strike.
Jim Lamphier Tom Planner, it certainly wouldn't hurt. We could certainly cut that out and, uh, we could replace the current, uh, you know, one liner here with that verbiage. Um, doesn't, doesn't hurt to have it in because you never know what, it, you know, this prevents something from being outlandishly proposed. Um, again, I, I don't think you're ever going to see any lighting. They don't, they don't want to light these things up. Um, there's, there's no call for it. But it, it, it should be there because it prevents something bad from happening.
I agree. I think that's a good idea. Leave, uh, leave it in and we can, um, obviously it would be in the next draft. We can, you know, have some more thought about it and address it there. Six words.
Yeah, I mean, some we can probably say it along. I agree. We'll give it.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move it. Um, number six now becomes number seven. Identification of access entry drives and any interior driveways and rights of ways, along with their material for construction, right of way width and paved width.
Excuse me.
Yep.
Good. Uh, number seven becomes number eight. A grading and drainage plan indicating any necessary regrading of the site and the provisions for accommodating runoff from the solar energy system prepared by a certified professional engineer registered to practice in Rhode Island.
Jim, just a, a point of clarification and, and you can duke it out with Al Dario. He commented the, on the wording for that, it should be registered professional engineer currently licensed and authorized to practice in the state of Rhode Island.
Correct. I will, I will insert that. I'm very familiar with that particular phrase and that will be in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Number eight becomes number nine. An itemized estimate of the cost of decommissioning and removal of the solar energy system.
I'm good with that.
Fine with that?
Yep.
Okay. Number nine becomes ten. Documentation that an operations and maintenance plan has been approved by the town engineering consultant. Said plan to include at a minimum detailed provisions for maintaining the facility and the landscaping in good condition for the life of the project and the security provisions that will be implemented to prevent unauthorized access. Okay. Number ten.
I'm sorry, Bob Marvel here. Quick question on that. Steve Moffett, uh, uh, and, and Attorney Seipole, you had a comment somewhere along the lines about?
I just made the comment as far as the, uh, of a maintenance plan, just my comment was in regards to at that stage of, of the process, you know, because the, I mean, the, the plans may change going through that process. So, I mean, you can, you know, have them do two, three plans and if the process plans change during that course, that's just kind of, that was just an observation that I wanted to make note of.
Okay. But the wording is, is okay with these?
Yeah, wording I think is fine. I mean, fine. I just, it was just the timing of, of those. And it was just going, going through this document and just brainstorming.
So, okay. Moving along, number ten becomes eleven. Moving along, number ten becomes eleven, documentation that a public safety preparedness and response plan has been approved by the police chief, the fire chief of the applicable fire district, and the director of emergency medical services, said plan at a minimum to detail the standards, procedures, and communication protocol to be utilized at the facility in the event of a fire or other emergency.
Good with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, number eleven becomes twelve, a letter from National Grid confirming the feasibility of the interconnection to the grid.
Now, Jim, that would just be National Grid confirming that the location would be accessible by National Grid, is that kind of it, because if, if it was absolutely impossible to, I mean, interconnect, then they wouldn't think it's feasible, right? It's kind of.
Yes, they, yeah, they have to conduct a feasibility study, which costs them money upfront to do, it's nonrefundable, and there's a report that they're given at the end of the day on that one. Suppose we could get that.
So this Bob Marvel, so this statement here is, is acceptable to keep this, I know, Attorney Seipol, I think you had suggested maybe removing it?
A letter from National Grid?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I just, well, my comment was, I don't know if National Grid issues such a, a letter, and I would hate to impose a requirement on an applicant that isn't, isn't possible to comply with, and that's something I could look into further if, that's something the coun, council is interested in, but I just, I have no idea if, if that early in the process, National Grid will, will write a letter saying that interconnection is feasible or not. It seems kind of speculative, and I'd be surprised if they did that, that early on.
Jim, Counsel Gary, have you, have you seen anything like this before, before it comes to planning, that there's a letter of feasibility?
I, I don't recall ever seeing such a, such a thing before they came to planning, no, it's, if they don't get the, if it's not feasible or they don't get the approval, it doesn't go forward, but they, you know, especially early on in the solar rush that we had here, is that everybody was under the gun to get these things done quickly, and if they didn't, their, their award that they were given, again, these had to be competitive at one point in time, and, you know, if they, if they didn't get going with the, get town approvals in place, they would lose their, their award, if you will, and so, people were just going, going without these things, but it doesn't, it doesn't absolve them of the responsibility to go through a feasibility study with National Grid, and if it, if it comes out that it's financially infeasible, and again, you never know what, what National Grid's going to require in terms of substation upgrades, you know, line, line things that have to be made, and all that impacts the bottom line, and if it proves to be insurmountable, then they won't go forward with it, but National Grid won't even do their studies until these developers put up so much money, which is nonrefundable, and, and so, the developer doesn't even know until, until National Grid does their analysis, so.
Is this something maybe, I, I, I agree with the solicitor there, you know, and just, you know, what happens involves, we lead this in, all of a suddenly, we found out that it's never been asked before, I think maybe that's something we can just kind of put a question mark to, and maybe go back and take a look at some of the old files, or actually reach out to some kind of National Grid liaison, so we don't kind of, kind of, you know, kind of box ourselves into a corner.
This is Attorney Hogan, as, as I think the council is aware, my day job is with the Division of Public Utilities and Carriers, and I'm the implementation director for energy policy there, so I'll get you the answer that you're looking for, and I'll, I'll get it to Jim and to the council and to Attorney Seipol as well.
Yeah, so I mean, just, just imagine that we had an applicant, everything was good to go, we're all happy, and all of a sudden, we put the stipulation on him to find out that this is something, just somebody made up at 11 o'clock, or they have the 11th hour just to put in there, but yeah, I appreciate it, thank you, thank you, thank you, Solicitor.
Yes.
Do you know where in the present, in the present PSES where we did ask for something like a letter or something from National Grid, that stated that, that, you know, that, that there, that the applicant's plan, I guess, was feasible, remember?
Yeah.
I can't find it now.
Yep.
Because they can't really give a, a certificate or anything until after the project's built, but we wanted something ahead of time to say that National Grid at least thought that the plan was feasible, that the project was feasible.
Yes, I think you're correct, Sharon.
But I can't find it.
Yeah, Jim, Counsel Gary, wasn't there one that was up in, forgive me, I'm not 100% sure, but there was one that was up on the whole belly side, and I think there was something about it would have been incredible, exuberant amount of money to run, to run the wires to the poles, or have the poles come to it, and I think that was, that was somewhere I remember reading about that.
That was in 2015 when the very first thought for Stub Town Road, I think.
All right, so we want to, do we want to just hold off until Solicitor Hogan gets us an answer on this one? And move on?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so we'll, so we'll leave it in there for now.
This is something that's made up, but all of a sudden, we get an app.
But at the same time, though, I mean, I kind of think that, I mean, early on, it would kind of prevent the applicant from also wasting their time, you know what I mean? Because think about the money that it costs to build these, these projects, you know, and right off the first step is, all right, well, is this, is the interconnection feasible, you know what I mean? Like, like, is this a landlocked property? You know what I mean?
You're going to have to go, yeah, we're going to do this, and all of a sudden, oh, by the way, we got to go over a stream, a swamp, and this.
But then again, I mean, in our table, in our use table, we are, we are limiting certain things industrially, so, you know what I mean, so, so some of this just might be out of the door.
Yeah, I would leave it in.
Okay, I, I think that's fine, too, we'll, we'll leave that in, Jim, and we'll move on.
Okay, we're going down to page seven now, at the top, section 5.3.5, conditions, capital A, approval of a principal solar energy system shall be conditioned on at a minimum, number one, the establishment and posting of a financial guarantee in a form and amount determined by the planning board deemed sufficient to cover the cost of decommissioning and removal of the solar energy system at the end of its useful life, or when abandonment occurs, plus inflation, and at least a 20% contingency. The calculation of the decommissioning reserve shall be predicated upon the assumption that 100% of the retired solar panels will be recycled by an accredited solar panel waste recycler, without any credit on the financial guarantee amount for anticipated salvage value or reuse value of any project components, to the extent that the financial guarantee is utilized for decommissioning the solar energy system, and does not cover the full cost of decommissioning, as a condition of approval, the owner of the real property on which the solar energy system is located shall agree that a lien shall be placed on the real property in favor of the town for the uncovered cost of decommissioning expended by the town. All financial guarantees collected under this section shall be placed in a restricted account to only be used on the cost of decommissioning solar energy systems, and I can strike out that, and there, there was something else, but I think we struck it out.
Jim, Bob Marvel, I would recommend that we, so that is one long item, which has a few different items of note in there, I would take the line that says the calculation of the decommissioning reserve, and I would separate that as item two.
Okay.
From there all the way to the end of the line where it says the calculation of the decommissioning reserve shall not be, or shall, I forget what it says, because I had some other notes in here, but then, the rest of the, the statement there where it starts at, to the extent that the financial guarantee is utilized, I would actually separate that as a third item.
So noted.
Does that make sense to others?
Fine.
Now, there, there was a, another message from Elaine Calderon that had some verbiage from other towns that talked about, and I put in an item, item four here, so I'll just say the item, and you guys can, can discuss whether you want it or not, so this would be the item, item four after that, the applicant shall deposit with the town $2,000 per, it's supposed to be megawatt AC, to fund third-party professional supervision throughout construction, all unexpected funds shall be refunded, or, I'm sorry, all unexpended funds shall be refunded within 60 business days of issuance of certificate of occupancy. Now, I know, Jim, you, you said that we have an engineer to do this, but.
Does the town pay the engineer that overlooks this, Jim, or does the construction, the, the developer pay that, pay our?
Yes, currently, we, we have our engineering consultant, which generally is Crossman Engineering, they not only participate in the peer review of the project before the planning board approves it, but they are on-site doing inspections as necessary, and all of that is reimbursed by the solar developer, and there's no upper limit to it, whereas Elaine's thing is pretty much, you know, a pretty rigid formula, we, we have, we're very open-ended with it, we, we send Crossman out whenever it's necessary, and they bill the town, the town pays the bill, and I send it over to the developer, and they send us a check and reimburse us, so, it seems, seems to work pretty well, what we have now.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with not including that statement for now.
Attorney Hogan here, so I've got one question about the overall approach of the paragraph, Jim, at the end, it talks about the town stepping in and creating a lien on the property, but what's not clear is the, the initial obligation, is the initial obligation on the landowner to conduct the decommissioning, and then, if there's insufficient funds, the town pushes the landowner aside and jumps in, can you, can you explain it a little for me, I'm not really following this?
Yes, Jim Lanthier, there is, initially, there is absolutely no obligation on the part of the property owner to, you know, bear the responsibility of decommissioning this system, only in the event that the, the town has to go expend funds to do it itself, should the decommissioning be insufficient, would we, would we need something tangible to put a lien on and go after them? Now, I know, you know, years ago, when we did our first PSES ordinance, I know the town council at that time did not want to penalize the, the property owner, particularly with respect to farms, okay, should the, should a developer, you know, fail to, you know, post enough, you know, funds sufficient to do the job, but I know that this is, this is a new addition here, and it's not a, it's not a bad idea.
But, but as a practical matter of the mechanics, so, I'm trying to understand, let's, as you're, we're at the end of the project now, right, and at the end of useful life, is the developer going to come to the town and say, okay, you've been holding my funds for 25 years, now I need those funds in order to decommission, or are you expecting that to be done upfront, and then if it doesn't happen, that's what this, these funds are used for?
Well, I suppose we can, could construct it now either way, I mean, I think, I think the intent was, is to have the developer use their own funds to decommission, and then once they do it, to the satisfaction of the town, then we release the funds that we're holding in escrow, and we give it to the developer, so we reimburse the developer.
If that's the intent, I think that should be much, made much clearer in this section.
I agree, I agree.
But, but Attorney Hogan, do you know we do make the developer submit a bond, a bond, a decommissioning?
Right, right.
At the very beginning.
And in some cases, it's substantial, from the, the notes I've been reading, so that was my question, is the, is the developer anticipating that it will, those funds will be available to it at the end of the project to come in and then use those funds for the decommissioning, or is that merely an insurance policy for the town in the event that the developer doesn't spend its own money at that time?
I think, I, I don't know, I guess I thought that the developer used the money that we were holding.
Yeah, so that, what I'm saying is that that, depending on what your intent is, it, it should be clear in this section as to how that's operating, because right now, it's not clear.
I agree, we've, the town has executed escrow agreements with developers on a project-by-project basis, which basically explains all of that.
Okay.
In, in, in the legal agreement that was prepared by our previous solicitor, and, and let's say Southern Sky or Revity, if you will, so.
Jimmy, there's probably provisions in that specific agreement that could be plucked out and put right into the ordinance, so that it's very clear from the get-go what the responsibility is going to be.
Absolutely, that, that's the way to put it, right up front, rather than rely on a, rather, rather than rely on an instrument that's created on a project-by-project basis, put it right in the ordinance. Yep, you're correct. I'll see what I can do about reviewing those documents and maybe adding some more language here.
So are we not doing number four, or are we doing four after you evaluate what you've got in the actual documents, Jim?
I will, yeah, I, I can add a, a number four there with that, with that language. Keep in mind, I, these, these agreements are pretty, pretty substantial agreements, so I'll have to take out maybe several sections that apply to this, but let me take a look at them, and I'll try to make something succinct that does the job. At least clarifies it.
Okay.
Okay, do we want to move to 5.3.6, general requirements for solar energy systems, capital A, requirements for all solar energy systems, primary and accessory, I'm sorry, principal, principal and accessory. Number one, the construction and operation of solar energy systems shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements, including but not limited to all applicable safety, construction, electrical, and communications requirements. All buildings and fixtures forming part of or associated with a solar, solar energy system shall be constructed in accordance with the Rhode Island State Building Code and Fire Code. Should be fine.
Agreed.
Number two, the maximum height of ground-mounted principal solar energy systems shall be no more than 12 feet above finished grade. That kind of stems from our current ordinance?
Panels or systems?
I'm sorry?
Solar panels. Which shall include all, so, number two, maximum height of ground-mounted solar energy panels, or should it be systems?
Well, the, the, the energy system would consist of the panels, so, that would be, the, the overall height would be measured, I would, I would believe, that's what we do. When, when the panels are out of ground mounted on an angle, it's the highest point.
Got you.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, number three, solar energy systems shall be sited and designed to prevent or minimize any negative aesthetic impacts on neighboring properties, conservation areas, rivers, ponds, or public roads, and to avoid any compromise of prominent view sheds. or public roads, and to avoid any compromise of prominent view sheds.
So, uh, this is Bob Marvel, uh, as per Elaine Calderon, she's asking to add the words after that. Um, or of any view shed, including any wild and scenic river or tributary, period. And then another sentence, no portion of the facility shall intrude on any area within one-quarter mile of a river, tributary, or any integral body of water.
First part of that, uh, Bob, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, I don't know about the second. I think we'd have to, you know, have somebody render an opinion on that. Seems like a long distance to me, but, and I, I don't know how necessary it is, but. Not for me to say.
Thoughts from others?
I think I agree with Jim, we probably should get a, uh, probably should get a verbiage check. I mean, I.
I, I agree with Elaine's insert, so. I have no problem with it.
I do as well, because I, I think there's a runoff, potential runoff issues. I mean, I understand it's a quarter mile, but, I mean, this could be, I mean, there could be elevation changes that are severe. I mean, you know, with the disturbance of any type of land or anything, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna move stuff, you know? I mean, you're, I mean, you're gonna toss up the different levels of soil, the fines, you're gonna get this up the clays and, and, and things could run offsite. So, I, 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 I like the verbiage, I, I mean, it's... I like it in it. That's, that's how I understand.
Okay, Jim Lanthier, I, I have the language at home and, uh, I will insert it in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Number four, applicants shall propose an appropriate landscape or no-cut buffer that adequately mitigates visual impacts on surrounding properties and the neighborhood in general. Selection of the proposed buffer should be based on the context and characteristics of the specific site and shall be done in consultation with a landscape architect. Buffers that the planning board may require to be implemented include, but are not limited to, a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot wooded buffer, or a seventy-five-foot partial landscape screen, or a thirty-foot full landscape screen. Everyone fine with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Number, on, we're now on page eight. Number five, all solar energy systems shall be designed and located to prevent reflective glare toward any inhabited buildings on adjacent properties. Glare generated from solar panels shall not interfere with traffic or create a safety hazard. Okay, fine. Number six, onsite drainage management and erosion and sediment control shall conform to the latest Rhode Island Stormwater Design and Installation Standards Manual and the Rhode Island Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Handbook, as well as all applicable town regulations. Number seven, all utility connections from the solar energy system and interconnection of the solar energy system to the grid shall be placed underground, except where above-ground interconnection is expressly required by National Grid. Number eight, clearing of natural vegetation shall be strictly limited to what is necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the solar array, of the solar energy system, or as otherwise prescribed by applicable laws and regulations. Removal of trees within a town right of way shall be subject to the approval of the Director of Public Works. Excavation and filling of project sites shall be limited to what is necessary to stabilize the installation area.
Bob Marvel here, uh, just as per Elaine Calderon, I'd like to add a sentence after that. Um, and that is, there shall be no clearance of vegetation within four-hundred-feet distance of a wild and scenic river or tributary.
So noted, I have the language and I will insert it. Okay. Number nine, lighting of the solar energy system shall be limited to that required for safety and operational purposes. All site lighting shall be directed downward and incorporate full cutoff fixtures to reduce light pollution and confine the light footprint to the facility site. So that's similar to what's, uh, we have right now and what I was gonna insert, uh, earlier.
Yeah, I mean, that could fit the lighting plan, right? I mean, that's what we.
Yeah, that's, that's where it is, yeah.
Does that, does that do it? I don't need to insert it again?
I mean, I, I would think, I mean, I mean, you tell me, I mean, it sounds like it's a lighting plan right there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
If we were to insert it, I mean, I, I mean, should we leave it earlier on in the, in the ordinance? Or should we, where it's kind of listed, you know, a little differently? And, I mean, I, it probably doesn't matter.
This is Bob Marvel, I would recommend just removing the previous line, that really short line that requires a lighting plan. I'd just remove it.
I agree.
Okay, so noted. Number ten, no building permit shall issue for any solar energy system unless and until notice is provided by the town planner to the town building official in writing that all of the applicable approvals have been received and all of the applicable requirements of this chapter have been met.
It's good to me.
Okay, capital B, requirements, oh, sorry.
Hold on one second, Jim.
Yep.
Maybe I, I'm missing some of this out here and, and, and maybe it's farther in there. But something to do with, um, not, not allowing the, uh, the solar development to create power until everything has been taken care of, uh, all, you know, pre, um, pre, pre-established guidelines or, uh, demands, nah, I shouldn't say demands, but, um.
Requirements.
Yeah, you know, like requirements, like if there's not, you know, if they haven't dotted every I, you know, there's, there's no switch going on, kind of deal.
Yeah, we, I, I recall, uh, language that we just went over similar to that, yeah.
Okay, my bad.
But this, um, let's see, now this here, yeah, no building, yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't hurt to, uh, be redundant, I don't think. If it's a little bit different, but I can, I can look and see where that was and we can talk about it next time if you like.
So, this is Bob Marvel, so that, uh, because this, this item ten here pertains to, uh, building permit, so that's, you know, upon constr- or getting ready to, to construct the, the system. Uh, Steve, I think you're talking about, once it's constructed, there should be a gate that, that says this, uh, system cannot go operational until they've met all of our requirements from that point.
I like.
I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah. That's, that, I think that's.
I agree.
Steps with it.
Yes, that, that's generally the, uh, the intent of this here, is to make sure that the decommissioning is paid and, and that they've done everything they're supposed to do, um.
Charlotte's, Florida just doesn't, okay, let's go test it today, when they're ready to go, all systems go. It does, there's no pre-test before solar rolls. You flip the switch and you go.
Right, I, I, I just want to make sure that they've, um, I mean, we've given them the opportunity to build it. I can't move into my house unless I have the, you know, so it's just that kind of thought process, you know? I mean, I would think the rules that apply to our citizens should probably apply to, you know, solar developers too.
So this is Bob, again, I, I think maybe that's something we should make sure is, is a little bit further down in the document. Um, you know, uh, I think there's a section on, uh, inspection and enforcement or, you know, somewhere down a little bit below.
Now, with that being said, I mean, we are into ten o'clock hour now. Jim, do you think we're at a point now beyond page eight, uh, almost through page eight, that we could continue this to the next workshop?
Uh, yes, I do, I do, uh, we, uh, if we, yeah, the rest of it, I think is quite doable. I think we, uh, spent a lot of time on the front end of this with the use table and everything and the important stuff. And I think we can, I think we could pretty much breeze through this at the next workshop.
Okay, and then my next question, um, is this, um, this revised, cleaned-up, um, draft for the first half of this draft, is that something that we could, uh, have posted on the website so others can kind of follow along in a public?
Absolutely, I will, um, I will get this turned around as fast as I can this week. And like I say, by the end of the week at, at the latest, I will have what we, what we've done so far. And I'll date it, uh, appropriately to a today's date, such that this would be identified as the most current.
Okay, and then just another quick question, should we, just for, you know, just kind of transparency people seeing all this, maybe post your original draft on there as well? Just so they can see if they choose to, to go through and, and read what we're working off here and changing here?
Sure, I can, I can post the, the draft that we started working with tonight, uh, from staff. Uh, then I can propose the, uh, you know, post the next iteration of it.
Sure.
We can even, we can put them all up there, um, and, and people can see the progression.
I was, I was gonna say, this is Bob Marvel, I was gonna say we should post the original proposed, um, ordinance document as well. Just so, you know, people can do an iterative look-through and see what has changed.
Right, and, and, and just for the public, I, I would recommend, um, but just hold on one second. I'm, um, Attorney Tietz has, has his hand up here, I'm, I'm gonna let him, uh, just, just chime in before I kind of have some ending or closing comments. Attorney Tietz, you have a floor?
Thank you, um, I guess I'm not visible, just heard. Um, Andrew Tietz, T-E-I-T-Z, um, representing the proponents behind this. I just, um, I, I may be a little premature, uh, I was raising my hand because I just didn't want to speak before you adjourned to try to clarify what exactly is gonna happen on the nineteenth. Um, but while you're on the subject that you're talking about now, I was gonna ask the very same thing. It's been very hard to follow along tonight without having the draft in front of me. There's nothing on the website but the original draft, um, or at least that I could find. Um, so I, I do think it would be very important to have these other drafts, even if they're not all redlined from the previous, at least have the draft in front of us so that we can be following more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Jim, I, I would appreciate that if, if we can get it and, and I'm sure, you know, citizens, people that are spending the time, you know, to, uh, to sit in and listen, you know, I mean, we kind of owe it to them to do that. So, um, I would appreciate that and I would thank you for it.
Absolutely, it will be done.
Uh, yes, Sharon, go ahead.
Okay, uh, just where you stopped, I don't really see the difference between, A, requirements for all solar energy systems, principal and accessory, and B, requirements for principal solar energy system. All right, so that's, that was the difference and there's gonna be, uh, C, is there a C that's requirements for accessories? I mean, if you don't, which it doesn't look like you have it, I don't know why there's a difference between A and B, but anyway. Maybe B should be a continuation of A. Cause they're all requirements, right?
Well, A, A is requirements for accessory and principal. And principal being more, um, significant of a development, it has its own, its own set.
Okay, and then, and accessory is what, is really just the, the first part, is the A?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just was wondering. And, and I think, uh, what Steve was asking about, I think it was Steve that was saying, um, where we just left off at, at, at number ten. Number ten, sounds like that is the start of the project and he was asking about the end. After it's built, but before it's turned on, we need to have some kind of town, um, review, right?
Yes, we, we, I, that, that's something I have to work out with the building and zoning department and we can work on it together. Um, there's, there, there's a unique, uh, set of circumstances around these systems. They are permitted not so much with a building permit, but they have a state permit for these solar systems. And, um, once they get so far along in the construction, the developer applies for what's called a witness test with National Grid. And National Grid comes in and tests it and makes sure that it's functioning properly. Appar- apparently, wh- once this witness test is approved by National Grid, the town doesn't seem to have the ability to, to, uh, uh, to withhold interconnection to the grid. They, it has to go forth. So, so what we've been do- what we've done in a couple of cases is we've had performance bonds put in place to ensure that these folks come back and do the landscaping that's required at the end of the day. Uh, because in, in all practicalities, some, some things are tough to actually button up due to either weather conditions, you know, planting vegetation at certain times of the year or something like that. So, um, it's not always, it's not always possible to do everything that's required in a certain length of time. That's why we have bonds that we put on them. So, this is something that I gotta work out a little bit more in detail with the building and zoning department, because I would love to have the ability to withhold these people from connecting to the grid. Um, the more teeth that we have, the better.
Does this, uh, witness test, is that done in person by a representative from National Grid?
Yes.
Can I, can we have a town representative attend?
Uh, I'm not sure, we may, we may have our electrical inspector there, I'm not sure. Um, but, uh, a, at least, at least the developer, National Grid, you have to contact the building department and see exactly how they follow up with this. But, but they're, they're, they're certainly involved in the process of the witness test. They know, they know when it's being scheduled, they know when it's done, so I'm not sure exactly what they do, but. But these things we need to tighten up as much as we can, because like, it's like anything else that's human nature. Once, once anybody gets what they are primarily after, uh, to chase them for, for the, for what they need to do is, is a chore, so.
Hey, thank you, Jim. Um, so. Thank you, Sharon, also.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, so, uh, discussion about continuing, uh, to, to another workshop. I think we talked about figuring something out for January nineteenth. I guess that would, um, require me, uh, talking with Lisa and kind of squaring it away. Is, is Lisa still, yes, yep, she's still there. That's something we can do, right, Lisa?
Yeah, we'll come up with some sort of creative wording.
Okay. Excellent, right, with that being said, um, I am gonna withhold, uh, public comment until the next workshop. Um, so in the meantime, uh, you know, uh, if you have questions, comments, or anything, um, our emails are on, on the town website. Um, I'm more than happy to answer, any questions anyone has, any concerns, right, things like that.
This is, this is Andy Tietz again, so I just wanna, so is this workshop gonna be on the ninth? Might it be on the nineteenth? Is it gonna be on the nineteenth or is that still undecided?
No, that's decided, we will have a workshop on the nineteenth, we will.
You'll open the public hearing and continue it to a date certain and then have a workshop?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for asking, um, so, so with that being said, excuse me, Sharon?
You know, since Mr. Ty- Tietz is there, do we need to have anything in writing from him agreeing to, um, the extension of time?
I'm, I'm happy to provide it if you would like. Um, I think, you know, obviously just like to know what the timing is, but if you want, uh, extension for another thirty days, we can send that to you and, uh, send an email to the clerk to that effect if you'd like.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
May I ask a question, this is Lisa?
Sure, go ahead, Lisa.
In drafting an agenda for the nineteenth, we know that the hearing has to be scheduled on the nineteenth and any other business that's supposed to be held. Is it possible to have the workshop agenda included on the agenda that same night? Or is it something that you wish to have on another night?
No, I think we want it on the nineteenth.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm... Just to make sure, and, okay. I just want to make sure I'm set, and since everybody's listening, I, I want to make sure we, we all are on the same page.
Yes, I, I agree. I think the 19th, we should proceed as planned.
Okay. All right. We'll work on an agenda item.
Do you, do you want it to still start at 6:30?
I think 6:30 would be good. Because I, I think we can get the regular town business taken care of, and then just roll right into a seven o'clock workshop.
I agree.
The, um, hearing for the commercial hauler's license is advertised for 7:00 PM.
Okay.
So perhaps we'll have to, um, we'll come up with proper wording on the agenda, whether it has, we have to recess, and then reconvene again as a workshop after town business can, is conducted. Perhaps that's an option.
Okay, uh, you and I will work that out. Sound good?
Sure. Sounds good.
Excellent. All right, well, with, with that being said, um, I...
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. President, Jim Lanthier, town planner, if I could just, um, uh, throw out a suggestion for the next workshop. In order to prepare for this, if, uh, all the town councilors can, uh, pick up this ordinance from where we left off tonight, and read through its entirety, and make little notes as to where you might want to question things or, or, um, or insert things, uh, I'll pick off, pick up where I left off, and I'll read a little bit quicker this time, and we'll, and just to make sure. And so, when, when I read through quickly, put the brakes on me when you want to stop and insert something, and then we'll see if we can't make sure we get through it in time.
Sounds good, Jim. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Well, with that being said, I'd like to thank everybody for their attendance, um, and being interested in what's happening. Um, I, I think it's a great process, and I, uh, and I appreciate everybody's attendance. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Scott Billhurst, I move we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sharon Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moffett, aye.
Davis, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Good night off.